...birthplace, 3 Beale Street. We'll be celebrating the 96th birthday of John F. Kennedy this weekend with an open house from noon until 4:00 PM and neighborhood walking tours each day at 2:30 in the afternoon. Other announcements of upcoming events from anybody? Then we're going to go to past events. All right. Past events.
Wait a minute. Are...
Do you have an upcoming?
Well, Memorial Day.
It is true. Memorial Day's upcoming.
It's going to be...
Yes, right.
We're going to have actually a...
Bigger talk about it.
...Memorial Day than usual.
Yeah, right.
And we did hear that from Bill McGorty last week, but I want to emphasize it for people who are watching that...
Yes.
We're going to actually have a little bit of a parade with our older veterans participating. And there will be the usual gatherings at the cemeteries for the Revolutionary War and Civil War remembrances. And then coming back here and, as they say, a little bit of a parade.
Gathering in front of Town Hall.
And then Selectman Benka will be speaking eloquently, I'm sure, here in front of Town Hall along with some other speakers.
And I think Selectman Goldstein will be reading the proclamation.
Ah, that's right.
He will be Mr. Whereas.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Other future announcements? Gee, and I really do feel I forgot about... I didn't forget about it, but I didn't put it down. Other future events anybody wants to mention? Then past events. On Saturday, we had the Open Space Division and the Brookline Bikes people hosting the celebration at Amory Park.
Oh, that was Sunday.
Sunday, sorry. There were several select persons in attendance. So, Selectman Goldstein.
I was in attendance there. If I can tell a little story, I was against my own will, pressed into service there. I did not go there with the intention of making a public spectacle of myself. And when it was time to begin the bicycle parade, I found myself at the front of near where it was being organized where John was... Dempsey was getting the act together. He noticed me there and he realized he didn't have anyone to act as the leader to lead the people around the park and into the proper siding position. So, he immediately called on me to do it. And I got to tell you, I felt like John Wayne in a wagon train movie. It was like wagon ho! And I led the parade. As I said, turns out Selectman Benka was there watching with amusement.
Well, I was cheering you on, Ken, as you led. Actually, what...I do want to make a comment about something that I thought was really nice about the day. As you know, the main parade went from Amory Park up to Cleveland Circle, back down to Audubon Circle, and back to Amory. So, it was a fairly long...there were a lot of young kids, a lot of older people. I think the dean that I saw there was former town meeting member Michael Robbins, who was on his bike. But what was, I thought, a very nice touch was before that large group left, they had a special group for the youngest kids that circled the block where Amory Playground is a couple of times. So, they really provided a much more manageable thing for the really young kids to participate in the day. And I thought that was just a great idea.
A lot of fun. And it was real safety.
I was going to say, yeah.
I got some stats. There were 566 participants and registered participants.
Wow. And maybe a few more.
And there were probably some others, maybe a few more who weren't registered. And there were 100, approximately 100 of those kids that Selectman Benka mentioned. And I've also been asked to pass along some thank yous to some of the town employees who were critical in the organization. And those are Lieutenant Phil Harrington and Officer Ronnie McNeil of the Police Department. I know Ronnie's there every year and loves that event. Sergeant Mark Trehon, also of the Bicycle Unit of the Patrol Division. And then we should, of course, recognize the Recreation Department, who puts it all together and does a wonderful job of it. Also, some of the sponsors should be mentioned, too. First, they had free safety checks by Landry's Bicycles, East Coast Alpine Bicycle, Urban Adventure Tours, and Eastern Mountains Sports. I had my bike checked out, and I know a lot of other people did as well. And then we should also, of course, mention Brookline Bank and Chobihoy Associates, who are the two big-name sponsors of the event. And they have...both of them have done those for the past six years. Looking forward to the seventh time around on that one. It was a lot of fun.
Okay. Well, that's great. Good to hear that it was well-attended and lots of cycling. Any comments? Yes. Selectman Wyszynski.
I'll mention that over the weekend, I met with a group from the Griggs Park Neighborhood Association. We had the home of Sandy Springgarn. Susan Donahue organized it. I'd like to thank them both. And it was a good group and just one of many strong neighborhood associations.
Well, good. Other? Selectman Daley?
I just want to let everyone know that our diversity committee, we held our first meeting last Wednesday evening, which was just an introductory meeting, but it was going to be a very good group, I think. And we went over some possible topics and things that I think I had mentioned most of them at our meeting last week, the night before. So, just wanted to let you all know that that was launched.
Selectman Benka?
Two things. First, at last week's meeting, Paul Saner from the Brookline Community Foundation was here and made the...
Talked about Understanding Brookline.
Made the announcement that the Understanding Brookline Forum was going to happen, and it did happen. There was a full house, actually standing room only, at the back of the hall at the senior center. Understanding Brookline is a report that was done by the Brookline Community Foundation. There's a booklet that is available at 40 Webster Place, which is their headquarters, but it's also available online if you go to Brookline Community Foundation. Very interesting analysis of census data with the most recent census and changes in Brookline. And really quite an interesting and useful report for the sort of policies that we have to look at over the future.
And a good panel discussion.
And yes. And there was a panel discussion that went into some of the issues in a little bit more detail, but certainly not all of them. There's a great deal in the report. And there's also an even more detailed report that was done by Linda Olsen Pelkey. I don't know if that is available online or not, but it's one that we've seen that was not in the form of the publication that is now out on the street. And then the other issue in addition to that is today was DPW Day. And I don't know, Andy, whether Commissioner Pappy Sturgeon is here.
He will be before us shortly.
Maybe I'll save that for you. Very good. Okay.
And can I add just one more?
Yes.
Last Thursday...by the way, I also attended the Understanding Brookline event. Thought it...found it very informative and a great event. Also, attended last Thursday night a event that was co-sponsored by the Recreation Department, by the Country Club, and the Dexter School. And this is in preparation and anticipation, and it has a buildup to the U.S. Amateur Golf Tournament, which is coming this August. They had an event up at the Dexter School where they invited Mark Frost, who was the author of the book The Greatest Game Ever Played, that retells the thrilling Francis We Met story, and also movie star Bill Paxton, who was the director of the film version of that. And it was great. They had a book signing and a discussion with Bill Paxton and Mark Frost. It was very informative. And I did get some FaceTime with Bill Paxton, as a matter of fact.
You can be in the next movie.
Yeah, I think I'm going to be if they ever do Big Love again. I think. Right. It's true.
Right.
Bill Paxton is this month's Nicolas Cage for us.
Okay. Well, this morning, Mr. Kleckner and I were among a substantial delegation from Brookline at the annual meeting of the Commonwealth Compact. Sandra Duboe, Alan Balsam, Dr. Lloyd Gellino, and also HR Commissioners Rita McNally and Brooks Ames were there. We heard from Governor Patrick and others that achieving diversity goals takes time and perseverance. And I must say, I came away understanding that the Commonwealth Compact provides excellent resources that we can tap into for best practices and also to help us with our recruitment. It was a great meeting, and I was very pleased that we were so well-represented this morning. So, having said that, I will move on to public comment. I believe we have one person, Mr. Ames, signed up.
Good evening. It was good to see all of you this morning, or Mel and Betsy, to see you at the Commonwealth Compact event. One of the things that struck me was Governor Patrick was asked if he had any regrets or if there was anything he would do differently on the diversity front. And he said, "My staff will tell you that I am impatient governor." But he said, "On diversity issues, I wish I had been more impatient." And I guess my message to the Selectmen would be, please be more impatient on the diversity front. And I would make a last final pitch for Article 10. We have come a long way. The petitioners have come a long way. We have, based on Mel's good faith and Alan's good faith and Lloyd's good faith, we have adopted the Article 9 structure. We have, based on comments that Selectman Benka made, we have taken out that provision that was objectionable, that was interpreted as sort of cutting out Human Resources and the Human Resources Board from the policymaking process. So, we have really tried to reach out to your board because I agree with Governor Patrick that it really...the tone has to come from the top. And so, that's...we've extended an olive branch. And I just would hope that there'd be some give and take here.
All right. Moving on, the next item on the calendar is the minutes from May 14th. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I did make a few corrections.
All right. Send over. Well, then, let's pass in your comments to Kate, and we can move to approve them as amended. So moved. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is a gift from the SIDA Foundation. Mr. Kleckner, would you like to just give us a little comment about it?
Sure. Well, we were visited by Merritt Hewitt, who is the manager of the SIDA Yoga Ashram of Boston, which is located in Brookline, along with his colleague on the board, Melvin Miller, I believe.
Who's the publisher of the Bay State Banner, just so that everybody knows who Mr. Miller is.
And whose daughter actually attended Brookline High School.
Yep.
So, that's interesting. And they donated now, I believe this is the second year in a row, a $3,000 voluntary gift to the town. And it's identified to be used as follows. The Brookline General Fund for a third, the Police Department for a third, and the Fire Department for a third. So, we're very pleased with this generous donation and recommend the boards accept us.
Okay. And I move that we accept the gift of $3,000 from the SIDA Foundation, allocated as described. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the contract that we held from last week, pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Mr. Ditto?
Good evening.
So, we have from you all of your proposed markings, I do believe.
Yes. And it's quite extensive and quite tiny print.
Yeah.
So, what I can do is give you a brief outline of what this project involves. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Basically, this is two projects rolled into one. The first one is bicycle accommodations, and that's happening at six locations. And they are Carlton Street from Longwood to Monford Street. And then Harvard Street from the Olson Town Line to School Street. And Washington Street from Town Line to Cypress Street. And then Cypress Street, south of Boylston, to Paul Pender Circle. Also, we'll be putting bicycle lanes on Dudley Street, Park Street, and that completes the six locations. Those six locations will be funded with the traffic...I mean, with the bicycle accommodations code, codes. The second part of the project involves pedestrian safety improvements, and that's happening at five locations. And those locations are crosswalks, new crosswalks, and wheelchair ramps at Essex and Monford Street, Carlton Street at Houston, Carlton Street at Ivy Street, Colchester Street at Chapel Street, and then the new sidewalk on Houston Street. And that particular part of the project is funded from the street rehabilitation funds. I might add that these...all of these projects have been reviewed and approved and had a public hearing at the Transportation Board within the past year. We anticipate, if we get approval to move forward tonight, that this will take probably two months to complete. So, I'm looking towards the end of July, beginning of August to have this work done.
All right. Questions for Mr. Ditto? Selectman Wyszynski?
One of the conditions of appropriation on the bike items was that the bike markings be M-U-T-C-D compliant. So, are these M-U-T-C-D compliant?
Yes.
Okay. I also notice that you're taking out the crosswalk in front of the old Sewell School on Cypress Street. And I would congratulate you after all these years in taking out that crosswalk. It's no longer a school. It's in the middle of the street.
It doesn't serve any function at that location?
Right.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, we held this from last week just to get the map and so forth. And I have not heard from anyone in the meantime, from last week to this week, who has any objection to any of these. As Mr. Ditto explained, the Transportation Board has had public hearings on these issues. So, I think we've met our obligations to discuss these bicycle markings.
I do have a question.
Sure. Question?
The two items on here that I think are the most worrisome are the two bicycle lanes, one on Park Street, one on Dudley Street. They're going against the flow of traffic, if I recall. Is Park...I know Dudley Street. Is Park Street...is that going the wrong way for a while also?
Yes.
So, can you explain what kinds of markings there'll be to especially alert drivers that bicycles will be coming at them in the wrong way? Is there something that we can do to really highlight the fact that this is an unusual situation?
Couple of things we'll be doing to achieve that goal. The first one is, on the pavement itself, it will be a double-yellow center line with crosshatching. And that will be about that wide approximately. And then at the beginning and end...no, actually, at the beginning, there'll be a sign that says...or it says, "Do not enter." There'll be a sign except for bicycles. That's mainly more for the bicyclists than they are for the vehicular drivers. But I think between the signage and particularly the pavement marking, it's going to delineate. Then they'll have the bicycle logo within that five-foot bicycle lane to also delineate it's a bike lane.
Is it possible that a different color of marking than just white would be advantageous?
Yeah, these will be yellow. These will be fluorescent yellow.
So, they'll look different as a matter of color than the standard markings, too, right? Even a third color? I mean, yellow, you do see like double-yellow lines and things. Would it be advisable to do a green color or something?
We do have contra...these are called contraflow lanes. We have two of those in place already that have been in place, I want to say, two or three years.
That's right.
And that's on Netherlands Road and Parkway. And that's basically where they were striped, and they seem to be working okay.
I think that the...you know, if you're sort of talking about dusk or something, the white and the yellow are more visible in lower light conditions than, for instance, green would be.
Yeah. I'm worried about the Dudley Street one in particular. It's a long way and a real departure. I think people aren't going to expect it. And I'm all for it, but I want to give us every opportunity to market and market properly.
I mean, are you...to Selectman Goldstein's point, have you thought about, you know, watch for bicycles or something? You know, a sign on a pole somewhere in that area?
We don't have any of those on...what we did do, particularly at Dudley Road where it bends around, that's a very touchy point. And what we did is we banned parking on the opposite side of the street where the bike lane is. So, it gives, you know, the traffic a little more space to, you know, go further away from the bike.
Is it possible, maybe, when it first opens, that we can put up, you know, one of those temporary flashing signs?
We can put maybe some introductory signs, so to speak. Let people be aware that this is something new and watch out for it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we take a vote? All right. Then I move that we award and execute Contract Number PW 13-19, Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements on various streets in the amount of $216,538.2 with Aquiline Utility of East Richwater, Mass. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditto. Now, we have a grant of locations. NSTAR? Is this going to be Mr. Ditto again?
Yep.
The NSTAR is petitioning the town to install underground conduit and manholes at the locations listed on the agenda. And the reason for this request is that they want to upgrade the underground structures and thereby improving the reliability of electricity in the area. The seven-day notices were delivered to all the Yabotters. We haven't heard any response in the Engineering Division, but this is a public hearing.
Right.
So, we have a representative from NSTAR here to answer any questions.
Well, let's first just say that it's Perry Street, Linden Square, Linden Place, and Toxteth Street. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this grant of location for construction with NSTAR? Seeing and hearing none, members of the board, do you have questions? Yes, Selectman Daley?
I do. I have a question for the lady from NSTAR.
Hi. Would you mind just identifying yourself, please?
I'm Sheila Gillis.
So, I noticed that the work is going to begin at 7:00 PM. Is that right? That's what it says on our...oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the hearing tonight.
The hearing tonight. No.
Never mind. This is day work, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. And I don't have any question at all.
Then I have a question, which is not related to this particularly, but I did notice that there's a lot of NSTAR work going on. So, is there a sort of an overall upgrade happening? I noticed on St. Paul Street today that there were many NSTAR vehicles.
I know we've had ongoing projects and to replace all of the old systems throughout. And I know particularly, I think they're finishing up now on Volker Street.
Uh-huh. Volker Street? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I think that work on St. Paul Street is National Grid.
Oh, National Grid.
They're lining the gas main from actually...
I apologize.
It gets the all the way down to...
Okay. Apologize for the mistake.
You get blamed for everything.
Yeah, right. Okay. Then I believe we can move to approve or to grant permission to construct in a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public ways. And I'm not going to read this out, but Perry Street, Linden Place, Perry Street, Linden Square, Toxteth Street, and Perry Street. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, we have a reserve fund transfer from the DPW Commissioner. Waste Management.
Good evening. And thank you for those of you who attended that DPW open house today.
Oh, yes. Now, we want to hear about... Yes, excellent. You seem to have a bumper crop of youngsters.
Yeah, you avoided the rain, too.
We did avoid the rain. It got a little cool in the afternoon. But I want to report to the board that Selectman Benka now knows all about pipeline inspection camera and its inner workings.
Absolutely.
So, he's an expert at that. We may have to use him in the field a couple of times.
Absolutely.
To hone his skills. And I also know that Selectman Daley was there. Thank you for coming.
Yes. It was good. I made the rounds.
We had over 1,000 children there today. And we know this because we count the bags that we prepare. So, we know exactly how many bags were prepared and how many we had left, and we had none left. So, we had a lot of kids coming through there. All the third-grade kids from Brookline schools this morning came through by the busload. And I got to tell you that my staff and the folks that volunteer to work this day really have it down to a science. Now, it's a well-oiled machine. The buses roll in, the kids get off, the buses move out to park and make room for the new buses, and the kids go on their tours with their tour guides and come back. And the buses, the same bus that they came in on is waiting there for them to pick them up and take them on out of there. So, it works really well.
Well, the...when I was there, it was like early afternoon. And so, our schoolchildren had already been and gone, and there was a whole range of private school kids who had come. And everyone seemed thrilled with learning about sewers and things like that.
Yeah. Climbing all over the trucks and the flung loaders. And if you notice, I don't know, maybe you didn't notice, but we disconnect the horns now.
Yes.
Ah, actually, not true.
Oh, you found one?
Some of them, apparently.
No. I spoke to some of your crews, and apparently the air horns were disconnected. But I can guarantee that some of the horns were still working.
Oh, okay. Well, not the air horns.
I have direct knowledge of that.
But while I was there, someone had made the inquiry, "Do you do this all the time? Can we come up here, bring the kids like regularly?" And they were told just once a year.
The DPW people who were there were absolutely terrific with the kids. I was there at the end of the day, at the end of a very long day for these men and women. And they really were still really welcoming and enthusiastic and just doing a great job. So, they should all be commended and thanked.
Yeah, I hope you will... Yes. I hope you will, particularly Julie Piashantini, your assistant who worked so hard on this. But everybody was really put in a lot of extra time on it, and I hope you will convey to them how much we appreciate it.
I will. I will certainly will. Julie is our field general on this event, and, you know, she really cracks a sharp whip up there. But I will tell you that this is one day of the year that, you know, we never get a shortage of volunteers for this assignment. They're always willing and eager to participate, and they really get a boot out of watching the kids and showing them things that, you know, are inspired. And a lot of things that the DPW does is not very "are inspiring" to people. But the kids really get a boot out of it. So, we're going to keep doing it for as long as we can because I think it's well worth doing it for the community.
I truly believe it's a wonderful community event. And I have to say, I don't know how many communities there are that really encourage kids to come and crawl all over their very big equipment, which kids get to see all the time, but they never really get to touch. And I just think it's wonderful. So...
No, it's great.
Great tradition.
I was telling Kevin Johnson that when my son was little and there was nothing like that, we used to go hang out at the firehouse. And, you know, if you were lucky, they'd let you climb up there for a minute, the kids. But it's not nearly as good as getting to try out lots of different pieces of equipment and learn all that sewer lore.
Sewer lore. Well, we have a couple of exhibits that are really a hit for the kids. Well, we have a couple of exhibits that are really a hit for the kids every single year. One of them, of course, is the big Saw Vac truck that our boy JJ operates, and he does a terrific job with the kids. This year, we got him a remote microphone that he could strap on, and he was in his glory showing the kids all about the Saw Jet.
Right.
Really glamorous, sexy stuff.
We'll have to consult with our colleague, come on now, Mr. Green. What is it? He wears that green costume? We ought to think about...
Yes, Mr. Dempsey.
Yes, Mr. Dempsey.
Recycling man.
Yes, recycle man, recycle man. We have to think about the right kind of costume for this.
The, what is it, the Vector, I think it's called?
Yes.
Was directly across from the engineering department with their...
Transits.
With their transits and their little wheels.
Serving.
And I will say, the Vector won hands down.
Always does.
It was really difficult to attract attention with transits and wheels that you could roll around. So there actually was a discussion about how they could turn it into an obstacle course next year.
I suggested...
There are plans.
I would be careful of this.
I suggested racing to them, you know, with the little wheels.
They're going to work on it.
All right, good creative suggestions.
And the pruning truck was also up and working, which was a huge attraction. This is a lot of fun today.
Yeah, it was, and thank you.
All right, moving on to business. Reserve fund transfer.
Oh, what the heck.
Why don't we just approve this and go?
It's okay with me.
Yeah.
Well, let me just tell you a little bit about it, just so we can be clear. As you know, we have a five-year contract with Waste Management for the collection and processing of single-stream recycling. This contract was awarded in October of 2010, three years ago now almost. And I got to tell you that it's probably one of the biggest successes that I've experienced in terms of solid waste management going forward. You know, the tonnage in our municipal solid waste, as we predicted, has gone down considerably. We're now well below the 10,000 ton per year mark on municipal solid waste, and the corresponding amount of recycling tonnage has gone up, and we are now approaching 5,500 to 5,600 tons of recycling each and every year, which has gone up significantly since the advent of single stream. It doesn't come without a cost, of course. We signed a five-year contract that was made up of an annual fee with escalators, of course, for the collection services. These are automated collection at Curbside. It was also tied into a revenue-sharing formula for Number Six newspaper, based on the official board market for Number Six News, we call it. And that baseline was set at $40 per ton. The third component of the pricing is a fuel adjustment. As part of the original contract that we signed and negotiated with Waste Management, because of the volatility in diesel fuel prices, it allowed us a range of per-gallon prices for diesel fuel, and that was between $2.35 and $2.95 per gallon. As long as the price for diesel fuel was within that range, then we were held harmless. If the price climbed out of that range, which of course it has now, the current price for diesel fuel is right around $4 per gallon, then per our contract, we are required to pay the difference based on a fixed amount of gallons per month. And that, of course, is, it also adds escalator clauses to the contract. Since September of 2012, the OBM, the official board market for Number Six paper, dropped from $40 a ton to $25 a ton. We have a $10 upset limit per ton, so if it goes, if it drops more than $10 a ton, we're held at the $10 level. So since September of 2012, when it did drop to $25 a ton, we've been paying $10 per ton for the additional cost for paper. Normally, in any given year, we would get a rebate on paper. If the price was in excess of $40 per ton, we would get 60% of the difference back in terms of revenue sharing. As an example, last fiscal year, we took in about $40,000 in revenue-sharing offsets for the paper market. The market has since risen back to $35 a ton, so we're coming back towards the $40 a ton, and I'm hopeful that in the next couple of months, we'll be back at $40 a ton and that extra charge will stop. But because of these two additional fees, for the first time that I can remember, we are now running a deficit in recycling and solid waste overall. Even though the tonnage of municipal solid waste has dropped, and we do save $87 a ton when that happens, it's not enough to cover the additional costs. We've incurred nearly $70,000 in additional costs for Waste Management because of the fuel charge and the paper processing, the lack of the rebate. We have enough money in the original purchase order to cover all but $42,000 of that $70,000 increase, hence the reason for the request for the reserve fund transfer. And before you tonight for two items. Number one is to get your approval on the reserve fund transfer for $42,000 and to approve the transmission, transmittal of that to the advisory committee. And I will be leaving here to go directly to the advisory committee tonight for their approval. And then the second piece is your approval on extra work order, number one, for Waste Management for the same amount of money, which will then allow us to pay the final bills for this fiscal year and close out the account.
Okay, sounds pretty comprehensive description. Are there questions for the Commissioner?
I do have a question.
Then, in order to get you...
I do have a question.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Andy, thank you for that. It was comprehensive. What do we do to verify the cost per ton for the recyclable paper and the fuel prices? Do we take Waste Management's word for it, or do we have our own system for it?
No, we never take anybody's word.
That's what I want to hear. So what do we do exactly? How do we track it?
The paper price is based on the official board market, which is a federally published index. That's used to determine the market price of the paper, so that's pretty standard. The diesel fuel prices are based on a six-month rolling average, and that's the federal government's index for diesel fuel pricing for the northeast area. It's only adjustable in six-month increments, so if it spikes monthly, we don't pay for that. But they take the rolling average over a six-month period. We use the federal government's numbers to determine that.
Okay. And who bought, they don't use our diesel fuel. Like, we've managed to negotiate some good deals on diesel fuel, the town. I assume they're not filling up their trucks that are...
No, they're responsible to provide their own fuel.
I mean, in the future, maybe some way we can get our favorable deals for Waste Management and try and control the cost of the diesel fuel.
It's a consideration, but their trucks are generally based in Avon. They're coming here every day from Avon, they're going back to Avon every day. And logistically speaking, you know, I'm not sure that we have the capacity to provide, you know, Waste Management's trucks with diesel, although, you know, it's something that we could consider if the price differential was that extreme. I suppose we could consider that.
Thanks.
All right. I'm going to move two items at the same time, so it's two votes, but we're going to vote them together. First, I move that we approve and transmit to the advisory committee the request from the DPW Commissioner for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $42,000 for end-of-year solid waste costs. Second, I move that we approve extra work order, number one, in the amount of $42,000 for work to be performed by Waste Management in connection with contract number PW 10-12. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Commissioner, you now have sort of a happy sad. Sad, happy?
Yes, it's with mixed emotion, and I talked to you about this next item. I've been working for the town of Brookline for a long time, a very long time, and one of the joys that I had, I was one of the youngest department heads, I think, in the history of the town to work at. I took over the water and sewer division at age 31, a long time ago. But one of the pleasures that I had as Director of Water and Sewer for the town was I was able to recognize talent that was within the division and try to encourage that talent as time went on and reward it through promotions and things of that nature. One of the most talented folks that we had in the division was Phil Traynor. He was originally the storekeeper in the water and sewer division. He's the one that ordered the supplies and took care of all the paperwork and the office functions. As time went on, I grew to rely on him more and more because of his drive and ambition, and he was promoted to inspector and general foreman, and finally, operations manager under my directorship. And I had the pleasure of recommending him to you when I left to take over as Director of the Water and Sewer Division, and he's done a terrific job at that for the last nearly four years. It's with sadness that you know that he's put his papers in to retire at the end of June, and I had hoped that he would stay for as long as I would stay. It's always tough to fill senior management positions anywhere, but I respect his decision, and it's time for us to move on. So I'm here to talk to you about getting your approval to fill the soon-to-be vacant position of Director of Water and Sewer. It's a D6 classified position in the senior management plan. This position is a key part of the senior management team at the Public Works Department. I do have four divisions with four division directors, and every one of them are like my right arm, so I have four right arms to run the department. This one is particularly critical. It's responsible for the operation of the water distribution system, absolutely critical. It's responsible for the operation and maintenance of the sanitary sewerage system, again, a critical operation. Also responsible for the operation and maintenance of the stormwater drainage system, and nights like tonight, you see how critical that is. This position has to be a, the director must hold a Grade Four Water Distribution Certification from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is the highest certification that you can obtain to operate a potable water, drinking water system. So these are all important attributes that I have to be cognizant of going forward. We need your permission to fill the job tonight. We want to start the process. I'm anticipating it to be a very comprehensive process to fill this job because it is a very critical position. We will be working with HR to develop a position advertisement that I would anticipate being advertised in all the normal places, probably for three to four weeks. In addition to that, I would recommend advertising in the American Public Works Association journals and newsletters and on their website, as well as the New England Water Works Association professional journals in their website as well. We're looking for a well-rounded individual that has water and sewer operational experience that can hit the ground running, become part of our senior management team quickly, and then move forward. I would, after having conversations with the town administrator, I would recommend forming a screening committee of perhaps some internal folks and maybe one or two external folks to help us screen the applicants, review applications and resumes, and then perhaps shortlist two or three or four candidates or five candidates for interviews so that we can ultimately make a final recommendation to the town administrator and hence then to the board of Selectmen. So that's it in a nutshell. It would be my hope to get a successful candidate on board sometime over the summer. Certainly, by the latest, by Labor Day, I'd like to have somebody on board.
Okay, I believe, Mr. Kluckner, you had a comment?
Sure, thank you, Andy. Andy and I have talked about this extensively, and I look at this position, one clarification, with the changes to the Town Administrator Act, it's actually, will be my appointment, and the board will not, but I, just like the comptroller position...
We're going to pay very close attention, though.
Well, like the comptroller position, which was a similar, not a department head-level position, but a senior position, we did convene a screening panel. We invited a member of the board to serve, and I'd be happy to do that as well here because we're, you know, one big group here. But I totally support Andy's initiative, and this will be a very comprehensive recruitment effort.
Okay. Questions, comments from members of the board? Selectman Daley?
Yes, I want to say we will miss Mr. Traynor, and please give him our best, and don't get any ideas.
Right, absolutely. Yep, Selectman Benka?
Mr. Traynor actually was at DPW Day today.
Of course.
As came in the door, and it was his last DPW Day, but he was right out front with the new camera.
Yes.
How are you going to deal with the period between Mr. Traynor's retirement and the new person coming on board?
I'm hoping that it won't be too long of a period, but I have a very capable operations manager in water and sewer who is Phil's number-two man. He also has the required certification to do his job. You know, I will have to step in and perhaps fill the administrative void, which is not a problem, but I will rely on Tom Steele, who's the operations manager, to provide continuity in the operations, the day-to-day operations, and he's perfectly capable of doing that.
Great.
But, you know, I would like, again, to make that time as short as possible, but I think it's important to have somebody at the helm.
We certainly would agree with you, but on the other hand, there's probably no one more capable than you to take over if necessary, so.
But I'm only one man.
Right, right. We know that, we know that. You should be given some relief, we understand. Okay, then I'm going to move that we approve, whoops, I'll find my actual vote here, authorize filling a vacancy in the position of Director of Water and Sewer, classification D6. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I'm now going to move ahead on the agenda to item number 14. Thank you, Commissioner, sorry. We have a crowd waiting in the back, I think. Chief, we're going to move your item forward. And take up police commendations. And I guess I would like to say, just in case there's someone here, I know we had some interest in one of our applications for common victular. The Cognac Bistro application has been withdrawn, so if anyone's come for that, it's not on the calendar tonight. Chief?
Evening.
Sorry to keep everyone waiting. Oh, my goodness. You said a couple more were coming.
Yes, and thanks for shifting around the agenda.
And I do apologize that we're running behind schedule.
I just, tonight is a real good night for the police department, I think, and for the town of Brookline, based on the fact that we're going to honor eight of our officers for the work that they've done throughout the year in 2012. When I talk a little bit about each one of them tonight, you'll hear one or two things that they did throughout the year, but don't be fooled by just doing that, because they wouldn't be seated where they are and have been nominated for the awards that they've gotten without the quality of work and hard work that they've done throughout their careers. Tonight is a culmination of a lot of hard work, a lot of new things, new thoughts that officers did to make Brookline a safer place. I think the proof at the end of the year, when our crime rate was one of the lowest in a lot of years, and it's continued thus far into 2013, where as of last week, we were 25% reduction in crime from the year before, which is fantastic. I just hope that we can keep it up, and with the kind of work that you're going to hear about that these officers have done, I think that we'll be in a good place to do that. We're going to, like I said, give out awards to eight officers. The way we do it, and we've done it since 2010, when Superintendent Morgan came up with a... with a with a method to do it, we were not gonna be have the awards be awarded from the top down. They're actually gonna come from the ground up and we've been doing that for the last three years and then some. But what we've done is we've asked the supervisors of the offices that do the work to nominate who they feel has done some quality work because they're the closest to what gets done, and then nominate them for consideration for commendation and the commendation gets reviewed up the chain of of command and finally to my desk and and we make the decisions. At the end of the year, usually during the month of February or the following year, a board is convened. The board is made up of every rank in the department, every division in the department, and everybody has a vote. And they vote officers for certain commendations, for having met criteria, and for different medals that we award. You'll hear a couple of medals that we're giving out tonight. So that's what what got us here tonight. And I know that you have a full agenda going on and I would just like to move through the process and describe a little bit about what each officer has earned, introduce the officer to you and present them. Superintendent Morgan will present them with their medal and corresponding bar. So the first officer will be Sergeant Matt McDonald. Matt McDonald, if you could stand up, Matt, will be awarded tonight an commendation bar with two stars. This two stars actually signifies that this officer has has received ten certificates of commendation throughout his career with us for excellent police work. You met Matt McDonald within the last few months when you promoted him to sergeant, but he actually joined us in 2004 and he was promoted to sergeant in 2012, in November of 2012. The year 2012 was a really good year for him as he was awarded five certificates of commendation. He was the officer that we had sent to Alabama to learn cybercrime, how to investigate computer crimes. What he was able to bring back has really transformed the way we investigate crimes. I think put us at a pretty high bar. He's done a lot for us and it's our pleasure to award him the commendation bar with two stars. Second with him, Detective Carlos Crespo. Detective Crespo has been with us since November of 2000. He was moved into detective bureau in 2004 and he this year he has reached the the level of commendation bar with one star, which signifies ten, I think I made a mistake on on Matt McDonald actually had fifteen commendations. Detective Crespo has ten commendations, so I'll correct that now. He's done a lot of work throughout the year, throughout his career, and I do want to talk about one of them. Back in March, up in the point area of the town, we had two individuals assaulted and robbed at knife point. They detectives took the case, they had absolutely no real thing to go on other than the fact that they had a cellphone that was taken that we had the possibility of tracing. They traced it to a location over in Everett, narrowed it down to about hundred to three hundred yard area. They mapped it out and started knocking on doors and lo and behold, they hit somebody who gave them a direction to head and they were able to get an apartment and interview three people. Based on those interviews and follow-up investigation, they were able to secure arrest warrants, search warrants. Three subjects were arrested, identified, arrested and charged with the armed robbery up in Cypress and Hart Street. A great job that they did overall and we're very honored to give Carlos this commendation. Next is a commendation bar with commendation with with one bar and one bar signifies five commendations throughout his career and this one goes to patrol officer Lloyd Davis. Lloyd has been with us since 1984 and throughout his career with us, he has had many assignments in the patrol division, various shifts, various assignments, and right now you probably see him out with a little different uniform, riding a bicycle in all kinds of weather, still doing what he loves best and it's patrolling. Back in July of this year of 2012, around 4:30 in the afternoon, he was responding, he was on St. Paul Street coming down towards Parkman Street. He saw two men knock a man to the ground, beat him up and start to take stuff from him. They were robbing him. When these two men set upon the one individual, he resisted their assault. With that, they ended up beating him up. Lloyd got out of the car, called it in, gave a great description of one subject that ran away, immediately placed the other subject under arrest there. Responding officers located the second subject who had fled very quickly. He too was apprehended and both subjects were charged with armed robbery. Both subjects had a lot of drug violations and he was able to take them into custody. Fortunately, the guy did not suffer that bad of a beating, but had he not interrupted, it probably would have got a lot worse. So very honored to recognize patrol officer Lloyd Davis tonight. One more commendation with a bar for five commendations, commendation medal with a bar that's gonna go to patrol officer Boris Vragovic. Boris joined us a couple of years ago, 2010. In this past year, he received two commendations for excellent police work. One of them was for an arrest of an attempted break-in down in a house on Colchester Street at 7:00 AM when people are just getting up, getting going for their day and we have people out here trying to cause misery to them. Fortunately, a neighbor saw this person trying to get into a door. Boris quickly responded and caught him in an alleyway trying to get away. His second commendation was based on a traffic stop. He pulled over two individuals in a car that was committed a traffic violation on Harvard Street. We tell everybody that it's really good that we have solid traffic enforcement because that that stop ended up with a two subjects under arrest for drugs and firearm charges. And it was a real, an excellent job by Boris. He's been doing this work since he's got here and we know he's not gonna slow down, We have a public service medal that we award and it's awarded to an officer or officers for outstanding contributions to the department or community through their actions which reflect a high degree of accomplishment. And this year, there was two officers nominated for it, Lieutenant Derek Hayes and Officer Michael Desario. And Lieutenant Hayes has been with us since 1998 and you probably recognize him over here on the liquor stings. And Officer Desario has been with us since 2003. Both of these officers were nominated based on what they did for a young kid by the name of Nathan Norman down in Virginia. And this Nathan Norman has suffering from terminal brain and spinal cancer and he had a Christmas wish and that was to receive cards from police officers and firefighters around the country. Well, some officer from a neighboring community decided it might be good that we can just have the officers get into cruisers from different departments and drive down. And once that got announced, I got a knock on the door by Officer Desario asking if he and the lieutenant could go down together. They didn't ask for anything for themselves, they just asked if they could take a cruiser, which we did and the police union paid for the gas. And they drove down, stayed overnight, presented Nathan with, among other things, a Brookline Police Patch, a shirt and several cards that the officers had given to him and I think they really made the young man's day. And so with that, his their peers wanted them to get the public service medal and this year they'll be awarded that. We have another another medal and this is our way of saying thanks to our officers who are activated militarily. This year we had one, well, 2012, we had one officer, Officer Dwayne Danforth, that get deployed for the year into Afghanistan. This is Dwayne's second deployment. He in 2004, he was deployed to Iraq where he served for a year and he stayed in the military. He joined us in 2009 and he ended up getting redeployed through most of the year of 2012. This deployment was a little bit different in that he was a supervisor, he was a sergeant of several members of his platoon. He had responsibility of their safety and he also had the big job of clearing the roads of IEDs, which they did, at various locations throughout Afghanistan. I know when I talked to him when he came back, he was very proud of the work that he did. I think they disarmed well over 180 IEDs during the time that they were there and everyone came home safely, which is a credit to Dwayne's leadership. So the military activation medal goes to Dwayne Danforth this year. Now, last but not not least, we have a police officer of the year. And this award is presented to an officer who has distinguished himself or herself conspicuously by exceptional conduct, outstanding performance or extraordinary contributions in accomplishing the mission of the Brookline Police Department. And this year, we're gonna honor patrol officer Morgan Lee. Morgan Lee is a graduate of Brookline High School and he's a Marine Corps veteran. He too served time in Iraq during his years of service with the Marines. He joined our department in May of 2008 and he served in various assignments within our patrol division. And this award is one that we don't take lightly by any means. The committee that the superintendent has put together has to take all the commendations that have been given throughout the year, sift through them and then take a look at what work they thought was outstanding and who did it and how that person performs throughout his or her career. It's not an easy decision because there's a lot of good work that gets done, but as in years past, we know that they made the right decisions when they recommended Officer Morgan Lee for this award. He is one officer that I think you don't have to worry about. I know when I talk to his supervisors, he is constantly at work. When he's here, he does his job. He is thorough and this year he received a couple of commendations for our number one crime. Our number one crime, I think everybody knows, is car break-ins. And Morgan took really extra steps on two occasions to take the initiative to go ahead and make stops, do investigations and make some pretty good arrests, which I wanted briefly mentioned to you. In July, we were getting a car break-ins, we were starting to see trouble happening down around the Kent Street area. And as you know, we give our information out to our offices and we expect them to adjust their schedules with their sergeants or by themselves and go to those areas where the crimes are being committed. And this time was was no different for Morgan Lee. During the early morning, July 14th, he stationed himself along Kent Street and he was able to see this guy wandering up and down the street, looking in the driveways and all of a sudden he disappeared. Morgan stayed in the area. He ended up spotting the guy coming out of the driveway again, but he had changed his clothes and he was carrying things. Based on that, he made a stop. The stop resulted in the arrest of this subject on his property or with his property. He had evidence from car break-ins in Brookline, car break-ins in Boston and residential home break-ins in Boston as well. He had a very long record and he was arrested and charged with nine separate crimes in the town of Brookline. But it gets better than that. Mid-September into October, the north side of Brookline around Fuller Street probably had more than thirty, thirty-five car break-ins. That's the ones that were reported to us and we know that when people commit car break-ins, a lot of times people come out and don't notice their car broken into or snicker just change and they don't call. Well, this one subject resulted in over thirty-five reports to the Brookline Police Department. At one time, a witness did see the man and described the man to us, so the officers that were assigned down there had this description in their minds and Morgan Lee in particular. Couple of weeks later, on October 4th, Morgan sees the guy fitting the description, get off of, well, walk into the Shaw's supermarket over the line of Brighton on Carmav. He follows the guy in, the guy goes to a change machine and starts exchanging change for bills. He lets him go. He speaks with the loss prevention officer in Shaw's. They give him some information. This guy comes in all the time, he's always exchanging coins, he always comes in, you know, after midnight and they started, Morgan started work to identify him, sat with detectives, told them what he had. They went on a little bit further. A couple of days later, he comes back to Shaw's and guess who's waiting for him but Morgan. He's riding a bike this time. He comes off, gets off the bike, can't account for the bike, the bike is an expensive bike worth over $2,500 and really does never good story about anything. The bike is seized and followed up on. It's taken from a house break in Cambridge along with another break-in, along with a car break-in, or two car break-ins in Cambridge that exactly the same MO that all thirty-five of the car breaks in Brookline were. Needless to say, a warrant for his arrest was obtained, he was placed under arrest, taken into custody and guess what, no more car breaks. So two examples of what Morgan does day in and day out, well-deserving of this award and we're very honored to let you know that his peers have selected Morgan Lee as police officer of the year 2012. I know Morgan's here with his very proud father, who is also a veteran and a long-time Brooklyn employee. So that's what we would like, that's what we wanted to show you tonight, just a little bit of the quality work that you know goes on while a lot of people sleep and enjoy Brookline.
Well, obviously, we'd all like to have a few words, but I would you also like for us to have a group photograph?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to say, you know, we watch cop shows on television and everybody has sort of a fantasy idea about what police work is and when we hear these stories, which I know are not stories, they're telling us the truth, I am so impressed and so proud and I am also blown away by the fact that somebody would bother to take all of the time and put all of the effort in that you guys do every day, up to including taking a trip down to Virginia to see a disabled young man. No one understands what it's like in real life and I think just to hear about this is an education for everybody and we're all so, so very pleased and proud. Slickman Daly?
Yes, I congratulations to all of you and well-deserved. And I just want to say that when I hear these different, the different episodes that led to your awards, I am and I through the year, the chief sometimes tells us about different events as they come up too. And what I'm convinced of is that not only are you bringing the crime rate down in Brookline, you're bringing the crime rate down in Boston and Cambridge and Everett and, you know, other places as you guys put in the the work and catch the the people that that are doing these break-ins and things around the whole area and, you know, I think it's really a testament to, we think the Brookline Police Force is is top-notch and I'm happy to have it proven.
Slickman Goldstein?
Thanks, I just want to add my thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for protecting property, thank you for protecting life and thank you for protecting the values of our community.
Slickman Banka?
Yeah, I noticed that as some of you stood up, you seemed a little uncomfortable being singled out like this, but and you may think that you're just doing your job, but you represent the other officers in a department that sets very high standards for itself and I want to thank you and through you, thank the other officers in the department.
Slickman Waschinsky?
And I too will add my thanks, particularly warmed by one of the apprehensions around the corner from my house at Harden Cypress, so thank you.
Okay, if you'd like to have some photographs, we'll certainly join the officers, but if you also want to have one just with everybody, because there's so many of them, we could do that.
We'll get we'll get out of the way.
Yeah, right, you can have a picture. You can have a picture.
Whenever you're in charge of this, whenever you're in charge, right?
You want some of that? Because you're a distraction.
Yeah.
Ken?
You guys are the stars.
I'm a back.
This place is kindergarten.
Chief?
Yeah?
Just jump up and down.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here.
Congratulations, you are.
Thank you, myself.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, Eric?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Pleasure, my chief.
Yeah.
All right, now, we're going to get back to the ordinary business. Mr. Cirillo, can you hear me?
Somewhere in the back. Was there a minute ago? I don't know. Chief Ford is here, if you want to do that one.
Right. Chief Ford? Chief, would you like to come forward?
Oh, there he is. Now, he's there. Well, we'll do chief. They're going to, we'll do public safety altogether.
So, Chief, you have an equally important, but slightly less dramatic item.
Yes, I would like to think so.
It's equally important. I said that.
It's very important. Good evening. I'm here before you tonight to ask you to extend a conditional offers of employment to 10 individuals. These individuals are the first hires from the new civil service list. They're all Brookline residents.
Oh, wow.
They have passed an extensive background check by the Brookline Police Department. They do a fantastic job of looking into each and every candidate. And all of the candidates have been interviewed by Sandra DeBeau, Chief Ward, my Chief of Operations, Deputy Chief Corbett, the Training Chief, and myself. The, just a little bit about the candidates. They've all passed our interview process, and we feel they're worthy of being given conditional offers of employment. But just a little bit of a background on them, of what maybe was said about them, and some history. The first individual is Devon Ream. He has a bachelor's degree in history from Virginia Military Institute. He's currently serving as a reserve member of the United States Marine Corps. I believe he spent some time overseas. All of his previous employees and references describe him as intelligent, hard-working, and dependable. We have Mike Pierre-Louis, also a member of the National Guard, and he served in Afghanistan. Been described as a great motivator, with a good head on his shoulders, works well in the stressful situations. He told us he'd wanted to be a firefighter since he was 10. Cormac Downing, described as honest, hard-working, punctual purpose, recommended by several people as being, will serve well with the Brookline Fire Department. Matthew Shatkin, described by his past employees as honest, hard-working, respectful, and a great work ethic. He's a graduate of Colby College with a bachelor's degree in history. We have Zach Araya.
My alma mater, so.
So, he's in, right?
He's in.
Zachary White, currently attends Mass Bay Community College, and he's receiving a certificate as a paramedic in June. He was a firefighter previously in California, and actually, part of his duties out there were working out of a helicopter. It was needless, pointless when we asked him if he was afraid of heights. He is described as hard-working, intelligent, and a loyal person, and who has been trained to be a firefighter his whole life. He holds multiple certifications in different areas. Connor Monahan is a, was a pleasure to interview, and he brings a little closure to a family group. He has three brothers that currently serve on the Brookline Fire Department, all who are very well-respected. He's described by past employees as also being a dedicated employee who gets along well with others. Demetrius Overroot, Oviedo?
Oviedo.
Oviedo. He's described as a hard-working individual, and he'll also be an asset to our department. Carl North, a certificate from Boston EMS, currently works in the Brookline Recreation Program and has for over 10 years. Hard worker, reliable, and a good attitude. Michael O'Hearn, described as dependable, a matured employee, who is both personal trustworthy. And last but not least, Brian Mulkern, currently works at Tough Medical Center, and described as a valuable asset to the department, to the hospital, excuse me. For three years, prior to that, he worked as an EMT, so he's used to some stressful situations. I'm sure his skills will also be an asset to us. So, those are the 10 individuals that we have gone through the process to date. They have many more steps ahead of them, but we would like to offer them, give them conditional offers of employment, so we can move forward with the next phases.
Well, that's great. And as I recall, you, when you came to us before, you weren't sure you'd absolutely be able to fill all the slots, but you seem to have done a good job.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board?
Sounds like a good group.
So, I would move that we approve offers of conditional employment to the 10 candidates described by Chief Ford. All in favor, please say aye. Slakman Daly?
Aye.
Slakman Benka?
Aye.
Slakman Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman Wyschinski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We look forward to meeting them.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good night.
And now, Mr. Cirillo, we tried to find you before, but you were buried behind all of those.
Roll of blue.
Folks in the room.
It's important to be short. Thank you. Here, here before you this evening to request authorization to fill a few positions in the Finance Department. We have a person who's worked for the payroll subdivision of the Treasury Division, who is now moving on to the School Department, to work in the School Department, Human Resources Department. And so, that position, Payroll Coordinator, will be opening up as of July 1st. We have, as you all know, we've gone through an extensive program of job sharing and cross-training. We have a young individual in the department who's actually cross-trained in the payroll coordinator position for the last two years, and would fill that position very well. So, I'm, if, if you authorize the positions to be filled, I would be promoting that person to that role. And then, of course, that opens up that vacancy, and I would have to ask authorization to fill that position. And that position is that of the Head Cashier of the Treasurers Division. That role, every dollar that comes into the town goes through that desk, and it's booked in as receipts. And she also does all of the vendor and payroll checks issued, does all of the tailings, backs up all the payroll people, the Assistant Treasurer, and the Assistant Collector. So, that's a valuable position to be filled as well.
And clearly, a person in whom, A, we want to trust, and B, we want to know counts carefully.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Cirillo? Slakman Daly?
Yes, I do, I actually, just while you're here, this is not directly related to these positions, but I understand you've had a conversation with Moody's, and you have some good news to tell us.
Oh, yes. We had the conversation last week, and we have been granted the AAA bond rating for the community for the 19th year in a row. I'm prepared to give a full report on the, on the bond authorization, excuse me, the Moody's rating and the bond sale that was conducted this morning at your next meeting on May 28th.
Great. We look forward to hearing more.
I do, I want to thank Mr. Cirillo, Mr. Kleckner, and all who work on keeping that bond rating AAA, because as we're doing so many building projects right now to meet the demands of our growing number of students, this, as I always explain this to people, this is like being able to get the mortgage at the most favorable rate instead of having to pay a higher rate because your credit is not as good. We are, we are being, we are able to borrow at the best possible rate, and I.
You will be delighted at the rate.
Okay, great.
You will be delighted next week.
I'm looking forward to hearing it.
Okay. Any other questions while we have Mr. Cirillo? Slakman Goldstein?
Thank you. Steve, can you quickly describe how you intend to advertise for these, to fill these positions? What mechanism do you use?
Well, the first position would be an advertisement inside, internally. The next position, the second position, the cashier's position, we would advertise internally and externally. I hope that there are people inside that could do the role. And I'm always looking to promote people. At this point in time, nobody in the office in the larger Finance Department has expressed any interest in it, because it's a stressful position. But I would not be surprised if people internally, when I say internally, other town department employees maybe show some interest in that. And at the same time, the person has to have a sharp math, accounting background, know several software package language, including Munis, our main package. So, it's, it's a stressful position. It's one of the higher-paid union positions in the, in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Cirillo? All right. Then I move that we, oops, sorry, I've got to get my vote language. Authorized filling the following vacancies in the Treasurer Collector's Division of the Finance Department, Payroll Coordinator, Classification T-5, and Head Cashier, Classification C-9. All in favor, please say aye. Slakman Daly?
Aye.
Slakman Benka?
Aye.
Slakman Goldstein?
Aye.
Slakman Wyschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. All right. I think we've gotten through our personnel items, and the next on the calendar is a common victular license for a change of owner. Spice Brookline? Spice of Brookline? There are persons here to represent Spice of Brookline. Formerly Cafe Han.
Good evening.
Would you just identify yourself for our recorder, please?
Yes, my name is Ka Young Wong. I'm the attorney representing the applicant.
Yep.
100, Chan 2013 Corporation DBA, Spice of Brookline. I have here with me the owner of Chan 2013 Corporation, Mr. Wei Chan. Yes, we are here to, for the application of the common victular's license at the location of 1009 Beacon Street.
And as I understand, this is a change of taste, but not exactly cuisine. It's going from Korean to Thai? Is that accurate?
Correct. The current operator is a Korean restaurant, and my client will open up a Thai restaurant at the location. Mainly, it's going to be a takeout restaurant. There are 14 seats, and we'll keep the 14 seats at the location. There will be minimal renovations, mainly a fresh coat of paint. And also, we will realign the exhaust ductwork, because right now, it's in a strange angle, and we'll just put it on the same side of the soaps, on the left-hand side of the restaurant.
I noticed that there is a request to change the hours of operation. Previously, the owner operated all, all days from 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., and the new owner is requesting 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and until 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. That's a substantial change.
Yes. I'll let my client explain, because he, he looks very young. He's 28 years old, and he has been in the restaurant business with his family.
Just tell us who's, who's going to be there at 2:00 a.m.?
Um, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wei Chan. I will be the new owner of there. The reason we are extending the time is, well, actually, I'll be there, or my brother will be there, to take over the restaurant until 2:00 o'clock. Then, the reason why we want to change the time from 11:00 to 2:00 o'clock on weekends, because there's a lot of students around here, and there's a train track right in front of the restaurants, and some people, the students, they'll be studying really late, and they'll be hungry sometimes, and we hopefully will be there to feed their tummies, that's all.
I see. And you're envisioning that a substantial part of your business will be takeout, or people who order and take away?
Correct. It'll be a takeout restaurant, and will, for people who comes in around when they get off the train, or when they finish study, and they feel hungry, they'll come down here, do a takeout. So, that's the only main reason.
Questions for members of the board? Slakman Daly?
Yeah, I have to say, I was a pretty conscientious student back in my day, but I never studied until 2:00 a.m. and then went out for food. So, the, that seems really late to me, and I want to ask those of you who are on the Licensing Commission Committee if there are other people down there open that late?
You know, I'd have to check. I'm guessing that some of the restaurants probably are, but I, I can't, I see, I gather we have some neighbors here. Aha, all right. Well, if this is the license that you're interested in, is there anybody there who wants to comment from the group? You have something you want to say?
Uh, to, to, really?
Sorry, we, we need you to be at the microphone in order to officially hear what you're saying. Sorry. It's all being taped.
The Tapas Restaurant is open Slakman's.
Please just give us your name for the record.
Doug Hughes, and I live.
You're a resident?
Yeah, at 78. Lived with it for life since 1990. And there's a Tapas Restaurant that's open till 11:00 o'clock.
On Saturdays and Friday and Saturday?
And then, the pastry shop is, closes about 9, 10 o'clock. They're very quiet. There was also, I think there was music that was in this? There was going to be?
There's no liquor license, just to be clear. This is, this is not a license. This is not a liquor license. This is a common victular, and it's.
But also, it wasn't only the hours, but it was also, there was an entertainment component to it, and that, that.
You know, that's actually pretty traditional. People play muzak kind of stuff inside.
Just to have a television on or a radio on, you need an entertainment license.
It's not live entertainment.
That's all they're asking for.
It's officially called radio and taped music, and it literally gives them permission to have a radio playing.
The dry cleaners, you can hear the music. They, they're open from 7:00 to 7:00, and, and 7:00 to 12:00, which is right next to your shop. They're open till 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturdays. During the summer, when they have the door open, you can hear the radio clearly in, in our house the whole time it's going. And they're not playing at a loud volume. It's that close, and there's a little bit of an echo phenomenon. So, having music playing till 11:00 o'clock, you know, is, is, the, the other restaurants don't have entertainment. They don't, on that side of the street, they don't have entertainment, and it's kept quiet. It's a good neighbor. And so, the idea of, of having muzak playing up till 11:00 o'clock.
Just down at the, at the end of Beacon Street.
Yeah, you're going to have to come up. Go ahead, come, come over there. If you want to respond, just, just speak into the microphone, please. Sorry.
One comment. I believe 99.9% of the restaurant, they do have entertainment license.
I think they do, probably, yes. I believe they do. I'd have to check.
I would bet anything that the other restaurants have entertainment.
It's a very typical thing, and usually, it's innocuous.
The Tapas Restaurant is open until-
Please just give us your name for the record.
Doug Hughes, and I live sort of behind it.
You're a resident?
Yeah, at 78. Lived with it for last since 1990. And there's a Tapas Restaurant that's open till 11:00.
On Saturdays and Friday and Saturday?
And then the, the pastry shop is, closes about 9:00, 10:00 o'clock. They're very quiet. There was also, I think there was music that was in this. There was going to be-
There's no liquor license, just to be clear. This is, this is not a license. This is not a liquor license. This is a common victular and it's-
But also, it wasn't only the hours, but it was also, there was an entertainment component to it. And that, that-
You know, that's actually pretty traditional. People play muzak kind of stuff inside.
Just to have a television on or a radio on, you need an entertainment license. That's all they're asking for.
It's officially called radio and taped music. And it literally gives them permission to have a radio playing.
The dry cleaners, you can hear the music. They, they're open from 7:00 to 7:00. And, and 7:00 to 12:00, which is right next to your shop, they're open to 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturdays. During the summer, when they have the door open, you can hear the radio clearly in, in, in our house the whole time it's going. And they're not playing at a loud volume. It's that close and there's a little bit of an echo phenomenon. So having music playing till 11:00, you know, is, is- The, the other restaurants don't have entertainment. They don't, on that side of the street, they don't have entertainment. And it's kept quiet. It's a good neighbor. And so the idea of, of having muzak playing up till 11:00.
Yeah, you're going to have to come up. Go ahead, come, come over there. If you want to respond, just, just speak into the microphone, please. Sorry.
One comment. I believe 99.9% of the restaurant, they do have entertainment license.
I think they do, probably, yes. I believe they do. I'd have to check.
I would bet anything that the other restaurants have entertainment license.
It's a very typical thing and usually it's innocuous.
Yeah, may I ask, the, the train, how late was the train operation till, I believe it's like 1:00?
Yeah, it doesn't go till 2:00.
Not till 2:00.
So there will be train noise on the street at 12:30, so.
I wonder if Cafe Han had an entertainment license. There's nowhere to check.
Yes, thank you for sending us this notice.
Please do identify yourself, yeah.
I am Saint Louis Swirnoff, and I am in Abutter. My house is 80 Monmouth Street, almost directly behind the Han Restaurant. And I'm here to urge you not to honor this application because the, in addition to what Doug, my neighbor, has just said about the penetration of sound from the restaurants, from the row of, of businesses that are essentially facing the backs of our houses, would be a, an intrusion. In particular, the hours that have been also questioned by Nancy Daley, the idea of having any activity of that sort going on in our neighborhood at that hour, 2:00 in the morning, is, I think, something that our group here would find very objectionable.
Okay. Just for the record, the Cafe Han had this license for entertainment, radio and taped music. They had a license. Cafe Han did.
Present.
They've had it for as long as they've been in business there.
But they haven't been open until 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, but I just want you to understand that someone was talking about the noise at the dry cleaner. These folks had the same loud, sorry, same ability to play taped music during-
Not supposed to be loud.
No, not supposed to be loud. The dry cleaner does not have to come to us for a license, so we can't say anything about it. But in this case, the predecessor operation had an entertainment license and we never heard any complaints about it.
Well, okay, whether this change in the timing will affect the people who do come, young people, people in college, may also change the nature of the, of the experience. I'd also like to point out, just for the information, we are a small domestic neighborhood. There are actually a row of five houses. And our habits are New England habits. We rise very early in the morning. I can vouch for that from all of my neighbors. We have discussed this. And the fact is that we really don't suffer for a lack of restaurants on Beacon Street. Just giving you a list of the, of the restaurants that are presently in operation. The, beginning on Carlton Street, we have the Busy Bee. We then have the Mission Cantina, which is a new name for the old, old restaurant that was there. Going, approaching St. Mary's, we have O'Leary's, followed by Sechuan Garden. And on the corner of St. Mary's and Beacon-
You know, we, we actually know all about those. We give them licenses. Thank you.
Well, my point simply is-
You're trying to tell us that you should, do not want us to license this one?
I think we are getting to the point where the sheer volume of business begins to impinge upon us in a, in a number of ways. Parking, a very large issue for us. We have very limited space. I'm trying to, to simply give you a picture of what the environment is like.
I think we're pretty familiar with the environment.
Can I just ask a question though? Because I think one of you said, maybe it was your, your other neighbor who spoke, that Cafe Han River was a fairly good neighbor.
I didn't say anything of the sort.
Okay, so are you, you, you don't agree with that statement, that they were?
I, I would say that the Cafe Han has been a neutral neighbor.
Okay.
I have no-
So they haven't been objectionable on, on their hours and their level of noise, is what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to, I'm trying to pinpoint-
Well, I'm sorry, I, I don't have that.
I think I'm going to make it very clear. We cannot deny a license because you think there are too many restaurants in your neighborhood. We don't have that kind of authority. So perhaps you can explain why you would like to oppose this, other than there are too many restaurants in your neighborhood.
No, I'm just pointing out that the degree of activity increases.
Okay, it's a commercial district. Zoned commercial. They have, they have zoning rights.
Well, I think the domestic environment also has the rights.
I, I'm trying to get at, what would you find acceptable? I mean, were the, the, the hours that Cafe Han River had until 10:00 at night? Would you be, would the going to 11:00 at night, one hour longer, is that acceptable to you? Or are you strongly objection-
Well, I think, I think I, I am speaking for myself and perhaps some of my other neighbors might have some other concerns.
Okay, and speaking for yourself, what, what is acceptable to you personally?
I would consider acceptable whatever the hours of the neighboring restaurant at present is.
Okay, which is that that is the-
I do not know what-
Spanish place, right?
Excuse me? That, yes.
That's the Spanish place?
Taberna de Agua. That's right.
I'm not, I honestly don't know what their hours are.
We don't have that in front of us.
I, I mean, I, I can, I have to agree with you that 2:00 AM sounds very late, or early, I should say, I guess, to me. And I understand when your houses are very close that, why you have an objection to 2:00 AM.
What I, what I am trying to parse out here is basically the back of your house faces the back of the restaurant. Is there, is there anybody from Beacon Street who faces the front of the restaurant who is here? Okay, you know, the- Right, but, you know, the, if there, if the focus of the concern was traffic coming and going of customers through the front of the restaurant, I could, you know, and kids talking and things of that sort, I, I guess I could understand that. But I'm just wondering what having the back of the restaurant, and as I look at the plan, there's basically a door that serves the back of the restaurant. Deliveries are through the front or the back?
Through the front.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to understand what the issue is. Is the back door closed?
Back door is going to be closed, yes.
The back door has to be closed.
The only reason it's going to be open is that we want to bring the trash out to the restaurant and it will be closed again.
Sir, you're going to have to come up here if you're going to talk.
Come and stand in line and take your turn if you want to speak, but you have to speak into the microphone.
I will say to the person seeking-
I'm going to relinquish this to-
Okay, thank you. I will say to the person seeking the license, that we have had complaints at some other places where you're very close to residences about, as you put the garbage out at the end of the evening, which, I mean, you're asking for 2:00 AM, so you'll be putting the garbage out in the middle of the night for these folks. You know, the, the rattling of bottles, the garbage, the door slamming, the lid on the garbage bin slamming can be very obtrusive to neighbors.
I understand that part, but of course, as, you know, restaurants, I of course have to lower down the volume, the voice too, try to avoid that too. Because if I was people that live around behind them, I don't want somebody slamming the bottle or jumping or do some really loud noise and then woke them up because they have to wake up really early in the morning to go to work. Or we have to be gentle and when we put the trash, we're not going to slam the door because, you know, it's going to break the door if you slam too much. Everything you have to watch.
Can I interject something quickly? That we do have a noise bylaw in, in the town that, that covers the, the noise issues pretty, pretty clearly, along with the nuisance bylaw. I do want to change the subject slightly while, while you're up there, though. Do you do delivery?
Yes, we do do deliveries.
And have, have you made provision for where your delivery vehicles will park?
In the front, but they do have a parking space in the back. That was the previous owner told us, there was, there is a parking lot in the back that they can park. Actually, it's only one space or two spaces.
Because in the front, I mean, there's not-
Yeah, I know it's going to be really busy in the morning.
It's Beacon Street, isn't it? I mean, that's not going to happen.
Basically, we're going to probably use it, the parking lot in the back around the daytime if there's no parking in the front.
Yeah, do you know if Han River was doing delivery?
What's that?
Do you know if your predecessor was doing delivery there, the current restaurant? And you say you have a parking space in the back?
In the back will be-
Yes.
And that delivery person, I imagine, will be accessing the restaurant through the back door, right? If, if they're parking in the back, they're going to be coming in and out through the back, right?
In the daytime or the nighttime?
Nighttime.
Nighttime, probably not. If it's going to, like I say again, if that noise is going to affecting all the neighbors and don't forget, I know there is a lot of residents in the front, in the back, in the rear. It's all surrounded by there. And I don't want that. If I open up until 2:00, I don't want that noise to wake up neighbors.
How late would your delivery hours go?
Probably around to like 1:00 something. That's for my, also for my employees sake too.
Okay, thank you.
And also, because I heard some neighbors talk about the, the music, we will have no problem if we shut down the music after 12:30, after the-
Well, we could limit your entertainment license hours.
I mean, this, excuse me, this actually, 1009 actually backs onto the arts? Am I looking at, it backs onto the art center, is that correct? What is 86 Monmouth is what?
The corner is where the art center is.
Where? Yeah, and here's 1009, it's right here.
No, I think you've-
Yeah. You know, if, if anything, the, the most directly impacted property I would think would be 1011 Beacon Street.
Can we hear from some more of the neighbors?
All right, there are other people who have, would like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
I'm Sean Lynn Jones, a town meeting member from Precinct 1, and I live at 53 Monmouth Street, just down the block from the site of the restaurant. And before coming here, I went to the restaurant. I went in the restaurant and I spent a lot of time in the alleyway behind the restaurant. And I just want to clarify a few things for the record before I, I comment on this particular application. The way the alley is situated, it's almost like having an enclosed courtyard. You have two rows of three or four-story townhouses, almost back to back, separated by their backyards and the alleyway. And even though 1009 is somewhat to the end of that and behind the art center, noise is screened from either street. And any noise in that area just tends to reverberate around and carry very easily back and forth out from the back window, from the dumpster, across to the townhouses, 82, 80, 78, 76, and 74 there. That's just the geography. You have to understand, you have very tall buildings that, you know, really contain the sound there. But that's why there's a noise issue. And second, just on the issue of the hours, the current hours for Han River are 11:00 AM until 9:30 PM.
They're licensed till 10:00 PM?
I was there and it says 9:30 PM on their-
Okay, I'm just saying, but we have to go by the licensed hours.
Yeah, and, and it used to be 10:30 and they changed it and they put up a new sign. And it had been 10:30 PM previously and they pasted up a sign to indicate the reduced hours. According to my colleague, a town meeting member from Precinct 1, Jim Franco, who just checked the website for the Taberna, they're open only until 11:00 PM. I thought they might stay open until midnight, but on weekends and then 10:00 on weeknights. But the website says they're open until 11:00 PM, according to what he just looked up. And I just point this out because there's a big difference between 11:00, even midnight, and 2:00 AM, when you have this kind of area with the, the noise. And I think that's grounds for certainly considering limiting the hours if you're going to grant a license. And at the very least, limiting the hours for the entertainment license. Because on, on a hot summer night, it's going to be very tempting to open that door. It's a small restaurant. It's going to be warm, kitchen, and the door does enter, open right out onto that parking lot, which unlike the area next to Monmouth Park, is not screened off by the building at 123 St. Mary's. It's just completely open to the back of the townhouses and the art center that are on, on Monmouth Street. And you might want to consider imposing some conditions, which I know you do sometimes when you have a license like this for review to see if there are any problems. But I can't quite figure out why 2:00 AM is necessary because it does seem so much later than the other restaurants on that particular block and generally in the neighborhood. And of all of the restaurants, this one's closest. Selectman Benka asked whether there was more impact on 1011 Beacon Street, which is immediately adjacent. There may be some, but noise tends to travel back and out and not around and then back in the, the windows. It's the way that the alley is configured. And I'm sure the wall between those two buildings is thick enough to prevent any noise from passing through. So I think it's a matter, at least if not more noise will carry across the alleyway directly out the back than will move through to the building next door. So I just wanted to point this out for, you know, the record, you know, based on, you know, what I observed when I saw this. And certainly the, you know, back door, I think, was open when I walked by this evening. It was hot, muggy, and understandably, they wanted some ventilation in, in the place.
Did you have noise coming out as you walked by with the back door open?
I could hear the radio. And it was not a radio being played at high valve volume. It was just listening to the, you know, news, I think. And it did carry, you know, out through the open door.
Can I make a suggestion? I want to ask the applicant, have you, have you had a chance to talk to the neighbors yet? Have you outreach to them at all? So maybe a good thing to do would be to kind of take a moment. We could continue this for a few minutes. Go out in the hall, see if there's a, if there's a set of hours that works well for everybody and then, and then come back to us.
Those people who are in line ought to get their chance to-
Well, they could, but, but their, their comment could be obsolete if they can all work on something together too. I'm willing to hear them, but.
Excuse me, I, I think you need to come to the microphone again. I'm sorry.
My client just informed me that if it will work, makes the neighbor feel better and also the board feels better, then they will amend the application. They will close at 12:30.
Okay.
The same time as the train stops.
All right.
I want to say something. First, the reason I want to extend it to 2:00 because there is a lot of students. They, like you said, ma'am, back in the days is different from now. A lot of, there's a lot of people get diplomas and they need jobs and they study hard. And then I'm a student before, you know, I stay late, I stay hard, and then I'm hungry sometimes. But like some people say that why they want restaurants to close at the same time. If everybody closes the same time, then nobody stays open. And if somebody's study up late and they're hungry and then they disappointed because all the restaurants close at the same time. There's nobody there for them when they're hungry.
I, I know. I hear from my-
That's the only reason, but I didn't know-
I hear from my kids when they're in town, they would like more restaurants open late. So I appreciate that. But when you are very close to neighbors, we have to also have some consideration for those, those people and, you know, who are trying to sleep at night.
Understand that, but I didn't know it was brought up this whole attention though.
Right.
That's not my point though.
So there are a couple of options before us right now. One is that we can continue to hear comments and then we can offer you the opportunity to consider what you would be, what would, what would be, I'm going to say, workable for you. You've already suggested that you could reduce your hours on Saturday and Sunday to 12:30. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The, the concern I think that we have, and I, just for the record, I flagged this before I even knew you were coming or knew you were here. This is a very different set of hours from the other businesses that operate in the area. And it would be a change. It is, we have not heard complaints about the former operator. And the former operator was licensed to be open until 10:00 PM. And now we understand that maybe recently they've reduced their hours. That may be because of other issues having to do with family members, for all I know. And it has nothing to do with the reasons that the neighbors fear that there will be disruption and noise. So, but what you need to understand from us is that 2:00 AM is a substantial change from the former operations and is worthy of our concern. Whereas comparable hours would not be because- because it would not be a significant change in use. And that's why we are listening to this and trying to figure out how we can provide an approval that will not be disruptive in the neighborhood, okay? All right. Selectman Benka, you wanted to-
Well, I, there are, I think-
I know, there are more people who'd like to speak, so we're gonna give them a chance.
And I'd be inclined to hear their comments.
Yep.
And then we can go from there.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Beryl Sheaf. I own part of the commercial block on the other side of Beacon Street, and I operated Beacon Supermarket for forty years in the town of Brookline. I would like to speak in support of the applicant. This is a commercial area which has, for the past six years, had about three and a half years of disruption with quite a number of businesses going out of business. I think it's important, as long as the applicant is willing to meet the zoning bylaws and the restrictions as to the time, and I understand that the town of Brookline does allow, under proper circumstances, commercial operations until two AM. One thing I know from being in business for forty years in Brookline is that there is never an issue of doing something which is going to be offensive to your neighbors, whether by noise, whether by odor. The board has in its powers, and always, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or whether it's the Health Department, always looks out for the best interests of the neighborhood to make sure that the conditions that are put upon a license are observed. And I think that if you look at this from a economic point of view, that if this is a question of other businesses in the area that this gentleman would be competing with, being open in Boston until two o'clock, and he's looking to try to compete with them. If he opens up and he's not doing business between one and two, he'd be foolish to stay open from one to two and lose money. I think if the board, in its wisdom, attaches licensing and perhaps a six-month review period to make sure that there are not complaints or problems caused by, you know, to the neighbors, that if in fact, being open later at night would be the difference between a business being successful or not successful, we've had enough businesses go out of business in this commercial district, and I think it was something like seven over the last year and a half, that the board should do everything it can to nurture successful businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Mel Klaus, a former town meeting member. And I think, you know, the neighborhood is not really anti-business. I think, first of all, the noise issue is a problem. Sean Lynn did that very well. I live at fifty-nine Monmouth Street, which is across the street and down just a little bit. I'm speaking for the Klauses, so that you don't have to have another body up here before you. So the noise is a real problem. I think that what may have set the neighborhood off was the two AM and music, tape music. And I thought, my goodness, when I first read it, are we gonna have a sports bar down here? Which did cause eyebrows.
This is non-alcoholic, I just want to be very clear. There's no alcoholic beverages involved here.
We're aware of that now, but I think that if the noise level were maintained and the hours of operation are whatever the other businesses are, Taberno is a perfect neighbor. Whatever goes on there, I never hear a noise anytime at all. So that really works very well. The other thing about two AM, if two AM is a going concern, the other neighbors will want to open until two AM as well. So there's that issue that we'd have to deal with. So we are not interested in having a restaurant operating to two AM. I'm sorry, I admire your entrepreneurial spirit, I really do, but I think if you can just keep it to eleven o'clock, the neighbors and the noise level down, I think the neighbors would probably welcome you.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Kane, I live at seventy-four Monmouth Street, one of the townhouses that is behind the restaurant and next to the art center. And I think that the neighborhood does need to encourage commercial, these commercial spaces that are empty right now to be filled. I'm not sure that the neighborhood needs, A, a place that's gonna be open till two AM, which I disagree. I think it'll be open till two AM, and with the cleanup, it's what, open till three AM, two thirty, by the time they clean up? I've lived, I've spent a lot of my life living in apartments across the street from bars and from lots of restaurants that were open late at night. And I think that once we let this happen, where, you know, we say, okay, oh yes, we're gonna keep the door closed at all hours, except when we bring out the trash, we know that's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. And the noise is gonna ricochet off the buildings. Besides that, I mean, I would just question whether, and I mean, I don't know how you decide this, but does the neighborhood need a place for students? Is this the right neighborhood? Perhaps this type of restaurant or takeout place belongs in a different neighborhood. This might not be the right setup for this, for what this plan is. I'm just not sure this is the right neighborhood for, you know, if he's targeting students, there, yes, there are students in this neighborhood, but this is a neighborhood of professional people. People who have, you know, people who've lived in the neighborhood for, some of them, twenty-five, thirty, forty years, raised their families. This is not a neighborhood, this is not, we're not a BU, this is not on BU's campus. You know, and I question also that the takeout, the car doing takeout in the back, I think that's gonna, if he's got a park, one or two parking spaces in the back, and he plans to be using them for delivery, that's gonna pose, on top of the garbage, another noise issue. So I think that if he's applying for a license and you're gonna grant it, I think it should be absolutely in line with all the other restaurants that are on Beacon Street and Taberna de Hara on the same row of commercial spaces that he's on.
My name is Jim Franco, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct One. Basically here to support the neighbors with respect to the concern about hours that Selectman DeWitt mentioned from the get-go. Sean just mentioned, Sean Lynn Jones, another town meeting member, just mentioned to me that he received, in addition to the people here tonight, before coming over for advisory committee meeting, at least half a dozen emails from other neighbors who could not be here, focusing on this two AM timetable. I would like to make the comment that whatever hours you decide to approve tonight, you've got to plug in the fact that there will be cleanup, as was just mentioned. And that cleanup is going to be, going to involve going out the back door. So it's disruptive to some extent to the neighborhood. This is the sleepy side, if you will, the quiet side of Beacon Street in that St. Mary's commercial area. So this is, that's why there's this, one of the reasons why there's this reaction to the hours, because they've never had a business that was trying to stretch the hours this way. Finally, I would urge you to, whatever you consider, think about putting a condition, perhaps a noise condition or a review before the renewal, the normal renewal of the license, because this is a new business, a new owner, and you might want to check it sooner than you would usually do. Mr. Sheaf just mentioned that, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alyssa, and I'm a student at Boston University. I was actually supposed to cover a news story for my class today, but I didn't know that this story is coming up. And I do live in Brookline, and I just want to say that as a twenty-year-old, we do stay up till pretty late. Me and all my friends, we stay up till three, and it's not, it's, you know, it's not nothing that's like questionable. And sometimes we do have to order food from Austin, because all the businesses are closed really early in Brookline. And I understand, as some lady pointed out, that it's a neighborhood for young professionals, but let's not understand that things are changing here. We do have more students coming into this neighborhood. And, you know, I just don't understand why do we, why does every set of business have to, like, operate at the same hour? Like, why do we have to be all homogeneous? So I'm not trying to sway our decision, I just want to point out the fact that, you know, Brookline is a very diverse neighborhood, and it's not primarily made, it's not just made up of professionals and, I guess, longtime residents, because I understand we're students and we, you know, just renting apartments here, but we love this neighborhood and we want to live here for a longer period of time. So I hope that you can give the hours a deep thought and hopefully extend the hours a little bit, because it is a problem for me and my friends, and I live on St. Mary's Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The, as I understand, we've had a offer from the applicant to reduce the hours from two AM until twelve thirty PM on, sorry, twelve thirty AM on Friday and Saturday. We don't seem to have any dispute over this Sunday through Thursday hours, which are consistent with the other restaurant in the neighborhood.
Right. And I, my inclination is to go that route and review what the performance is in six months or at the regular renewal time.
Yeah, the renewal time is actually about six months.
It will be about six months from now.
Right, yeah. Which is to say, for the neighborhood, we normally initiate annual reviews in September for a license renewal date of December thirty-first.
And if there is an issue, if this has adversely impacted the neighborhood, I expect we will see people back. And if it hasn't, I expect that you won't feel the need to come back. And actually, it's conceivable that in six months, the time could be extended. It will be, it'll, I think, depend on what the applicant wants to do. And if the applicant is out banging the dumpster at one in the morning, I, well, I'm, you know, I'm sure-
I think we're gonna let the applicant demonstrate, okay?
I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Right. I would like to suggest, I have no problem with Sunday through Thursday to eleven, that's already an hour later than the old restaurant, but as you say, it is the Taberna de Hara hours. I'm gonna suggest just midnight on Friday and Saturday. As people pointed out, they have to do their cleanup afterward. And I'm particularly concerned when they're telling me that they're doing deliveries, because the deliveries mean, even if, even if nobody's coming up to the door, that the car is maybe driving off with the food, the door, you know, door in and out and whatever. I would just do midnight on Friday and Saturday, and then if they want to come back and ask, you know, for longer, and people say it's been fine, you know.
I have a question about deliveries. Do I understand that you would have your own vehicle to be used for deliveries, is that correct?
Oh, no, no, I mean, I'm gonna have my own employee for delivery, as a delivery driver.
Okay. And if I heard correctly, the expectation is that that person's vehicle would be behind the restaurant?
Well, it depends on the business hour. If it's not busy, they have parking space, we allow the employee to park in the front. But if it's in a rush hour, they're not gonna shut their engine off, park their car, and go inside, grab the food, because we have a free parking in the front, the parking space.
Now, we made an accommodation for somebody in Brookline Village who was doing deliveries, and I can't remember exactly how we dealt with that.
So I was gonna recommend sort of a hybrid, which was to go at the twelve thirty closing hour, but twelve o'clock, and deliveries at twelve o'clock, and them a little bit earlier, so there's a little less activity out the back a little bit earlier, see how that works, reexamine it again.
I don't know if we can do that on the license, I don't think.
Sure, we can put whatever conditions we want.
Can we?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna have to have an agreement here.
I was inclined, actually, to go to eleven, but I'm persuaded.
It's our turn to speak now, please.
Though, yeah. My struggle is, you know, I want to, you know, I'm hearing what the neighborhood is saying, yet I want to encourage commercial activity. So I think twelve o'clock is, sounds like a good compromise. I'm supporting Selectman Daly's.
Given that there's no alcohol here, given that it's a takeout restaurant, given that it's not gonna generate that much noise, you know, I think a later hour is justified. I think, you know, at least as an experiment, but I think everybody will find that that's not particularly intrusive. It's not gonna be a big noise generating place, and also bear in mind that it really is-
They're saying they already hear a lot of noise from the dry cleaners, though, so, you know.
May I ask a just question? So I just want to make sure we understood correctly. So when he's doing his deliveries via car, he's saying he can't leave it on Beacon Street, because he can't leave a car running on Beacon Street. So he's saying he's gonna leave a car running in his alleyway?
No, I don't believe that's, I think you should-
They're not gonna leave a car running.
Running, yes. The store is right in front, nobody's gonna jump into the car, install a car. In the back, he can't leave the car running?
No, no, not in the front.
I just want to be clear about this, because-
I think what he meant was he's not gonna double park the car in the front, I think that's, that was-
Or leave the car running.
That was the message that I got, was he wasn't gonna be double parking on Beacon Street and run in.
Just looking at the assessor's map, the, and obviously, this is, it's trying to estimate the scale, using the scale on the map, but it seems that eighty-two Monmouth, which is the closest of this row of five, is about a hundred and twenty feet or so from the back, maybe a bit more from the back of this building, and going down to seventy-four Monmouth, which is even further away. It's, you know, I don't know what the conditions are with that courtyard, but these buildings do not back right up to the back of this building. I don't know how sound carries, I don't know how it travels in this area. But I do think that some way, we have to see how it works in practice. And if it doesn't work, then, you know, the hours will have to be dealt with. And if it does work, the hours can, you know, remain the same or change based on the experience, and based on this young man's handling of his responsibility to the neighborhood.
And I do believe that Mr. Han has had a very clear message here about what sort of operation the neighborhood will find acceptable, which is to say, I don't believe he's going to be successful if there are neighbors calling us all the time about excess noise and neighborhood disruption. So I think he's heard very clearly that the neighborhood is hypersensitive to what goes on there. I'm just, however, gonna point out that the previous operation never created, for us, no one ever complained about them. And in the operations, this will be pretty much identical to what was there before. The hours clearly are being, that are being proposed are different, and we're very interested in trying to come up with something that will be economically viable for this operation and also will do what we can to mitigate against potential neighborhood disruption.
I think there is one significant difference, though, as I understand it. I don't think that the current operation has, they may do some deliveries, I don't know, but I don't think that's a big element of their business. So there is gonna be more noise associated with this operation with deliveries going in and out.
Deliveries going in, they'll be the same kind?
The person coming into the building, you know, then picking up, going back out.
But the other operation had a takeout business, and certainly people were coming and picking up- and picking up food and taking it out.
Right. But we're hearing that this delivery person is going to be parking in the back.
Could I make a comment? Sorry.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, Richard, the noise level will be significant. That alley is a very tight place, and it's not very far. I'll bet you there's not more than 50 or 60 feet from the back of one building to the other, because there's only one, if it is, it's, it's not much more than that. No question, because Monmouth, 59 Monmouth Street is not that far down. And when you start making deliveries, I would recommend that the deliveries all be met and delivered from the front and not have the back deliveries. And just park the car there if you can't get it on the street, but not having the doors opening and closing, because that will affect those neighbors. No question about it, and you will have comments, negative ones. I'm all for, uh, we're all for entrepreneurial spirit and business, but, you know, this is gonna be different than what we have, and 11 o'clock is not a bad hour. I'm sorry. So, thank you, and I won't interrupt again.
Could we compromise at like 11:30? Could we do something that's, you know, and then if everything goes well for six months, at the, at six months, we have a review, and if everything is quiet to 11:30, we could, we could look at it? It's just that we live there. And so, while six months may not seem like long, or a year may not seem like long, you know, when you have to get up at 5:00 every morning and, you know, you know, you're going to bed early, disruptions in sleep is, is huge. And so, either quality of our life, we're, we're all people who, who support our local businesses. We've signed petitions for local businesses. We helped develop the park. We've helped improve quality for the Brookline Art Center. We're very active neighbors, and we support, you know, we're very happy with the, um, with the, with the restaurants that have opened and, and the shopping, uh, that are there. We're, we're the consumers of those. Uh, we support students, but can we, can we start at something like 11:30, and if things go smoothly, then in six months or a year, look at it from that point, as opposed to starting later and then having to mount evidence to, to go the other direction?
You do realize they're talking about Monday through Thursday is only 11:00?
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about-
And you're talking about Friday and Saturday?
Sat- Friday and Saturday.
I would argue against that, and I'm sympathetic to your, to your needs, but, but, you know, this is a small business. They got a business model that's, that's designed around selling to, to late night, and it's a tough, tough spot to make a living in. Our commercial storefronts are, are important to the vitality of the town, and I'd like to give this, this operator a chance to make his business model work. And, uh, I don't think he's asking for very much by asking for 12:30. 2:00, I think, is asking for much. 12:30, I don't think is asking for much on Friday and Saturday night. So, I'd like to try and, and end this, this discussion, 'cause I think we've heard what there is to say. I'd like to make the motion to approve the application based on the hours, as indicated in the application, from Monday through, for, um, Sunday through Thursday, and the evening hours for, uh, Friday and Saturday revised to, from 11:00 AM to 2:00, to 11:00 AM to 12:30, um, with a provision that all deliveries end at, at midnight.
Okay, we have a motion. Um, and I, how, how about adding to that a condition that, um, this is going to be subject to review at the time of license renewals, and at that time, neighbors will have the opportunity to come, and we'll make sure everybody's notified, and if there has been, um, uh, neighborhood disruption, we will take it into account before we create any renewals.
Absolutely. It's implied, but I agree with the statement.
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask a question. If we approve, um, 12:30 or 12:00, um, and there are issues before license renewal, can we change it in midstream, or are we tied to that period until the license renewal process?
I, I believe you would have to hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
Give notice and have a public hearing.
No.
Yeah.
But we could-
But we could, yeah, we could-
We could shorten it or lengthen it before the regular-
I think we'd have a hard time lengthening it. I'm sure we could, we could shorten it, though.
Right. Licenses are normally, um, for the period from the initial licensing through December 31st of that calendar year. This license, like all other licenses, will be reviewed in the fall, and the review process starts in September. We get our reports in, um, October and November and vote the renewals, um, presumably in the month of December for, uh, the following calendar year. That's the, that's the calendar for the reviews.
I, I, I question the usefulness of the delivery, um, cutting deliveries off earlier. I, I, I don't see deliveries as being especially intrusive.
I think the access to the back alley is, you know, if anything's gonna bother those neighbors, that's what's gonna bother those neighbors, so.
If I may-
And, and, and one of the ideas behind staggering the times is, well, that will, that will help us indicate if there's a problem, 'cause there'll be, there'll be a difference in the operation-
Separation.
For that half hour, and people will be able to come back to us and say, yes, I, I noticed a difference between how much I'm disturbed at, you know, 12:30, and how much I'm disturbed at quarter of 12:00, and, but.
I was gonna say that, 'cause my client told me that, at, at night, on Beacon Street, there will be parking, so the delivery-
Probably, yes. It should be, it would likely be possible for the, yeah.
Rather than to the back, it will be-
Sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't.
Yeah, sometimes there is.
Except when the Red Sox apply.
Depends, depends on what's going on.
Friday instead of midnight.
Yeah.
Well-
All right. All right, we, we have a motion, which we can vote, or we can have an amendment.
Somebody can amend it.
All right?
Okay, I'll, I'll move to amend.
All right.
Uh, I'm, I'll move to amend the, uh, Friday to Saturday hours to 11:00 AM to 12:00 midnight.
Okay?
I'll second that. Um, but I, I'm, I'm actually doing it with the understanding that the owner could come back in, um, if, if this is the way we go, if we go to 12:00 midnight.
If there's, if there's no problem, I'm willing to go to 12:30 when he comes back, if the neighbors say he's fine.
I mean, even, even before December. If, uh, uh, you know, if, if he finds that it, it doesn't work, uh, economically and that he needs the extra half hour, um, I would certainly be inclined to hear it even before, uh, December renewal, as would I.
That, that would be great, because my concern is the, the business is all competitive, um, that there might not be a business at the end of the year.
Well, well, we, it, it would be acceptable for a request to change hours. You just need to apply to change hours. Whatever we vote, the operator can come back and ask for a change of hours whenever. I mean, there's no time limit on that. I mean, theoretically, uh, in two months, you could come back to us and ask for a change of hours. That's allowed. It's permitted. It's, there's no problem about the request. It might or might not be granted, but you certainly could ask for a change of hours.
Yeah. But let me suggest that you think very carefully about what you're doing at lunchtime, because that has always, uh, Han River's actually been there for a long time, and I think they do a lot of their business at lunch, 'cause there are students in the area and people looking for a, a quick lunch. And so, you know, that, I think that, uh, you can do, do a lot of your business earlier in the day.
We will try to, yes, like, it's just, it's any hour.
Okay. All right. So, um, the, um, vote before us is the amendment to, um, approve this, uh, common victular license with, um, hours from Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM until 12:00 midnight. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
I'm sorry, a point of order, uh-
Well, it's to amend.
It's an amendment.
Oh, you vote, it's just the amendment vote.
Just the amendment. Sorry, I'm amending the hours. That's all, just amending the hours. That's all. It's on the amendment. How did you vote?
No.
No, okay. Selectman Washinsky?
Uh, yes, aye.
All right. And I'm gonna vote aye, so I believe we have amended the hours. Um, now, is, uh, Selectman Goldstein, do you still wanna try to change deliveries, separate it from the closing hours?
No, no, that's necessary.
Okay. All right. Then I think we're back to where we should've been when we considered this, um, which is the first question is to approve the application of Spice of Brookline for a common victular license. Hours to be from 11:00 AM until 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 AM until 12:00 midnight, Friday and Saturday. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the second vote is for a, um, an entertainment license. An I move that we approve application of Chin 2013 Spice, Doing Business of Spice of Brookline, holder of a common victular license at 1,009 Beacon Street for an entertainment license, including radio, TV, and taped music. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
You have to go to the microphone.
Right. [laughing] In the notice that we received, the license, uh, actually states, uh, for a common victular license.
That's correct. Victular.
Yes.
Right.
Is that not alcohol?
No. That's food. Victuals are things you eat.
It's just food.
Alcohol would be called alcoholic beverage.
Oh, very good.
Victular is non, uh, there, there is no alcohol. This license does not in any way provide permission to sell alcohol.
Mm-hmm. Okay. The second question would be that insofar as the hours, which you have, uh, addressed, uh, have been modified, and in your, uh, amendment, you call for the, uh, ability of the, uh, owner of this, uh, restaurant to write a letter, uh, requesting an extension of the hours, would that, uh, privilege also be offered to the abutters?
No. You're not the license holder. They can requ-
No, but it's not a letter.
It's not a letter. They can request a change of hours. That's part of the conditions of their license.
But they would have to come back for us?
They would have to apply-
Then what, then what do we do as abutters?
I think we said we will review this-
You oppose the license.
And we will be reviewing the license in the fall, and at that time, if we have heard complaints from now until then, and/or if neighbors come to the time when the renewals, renewals are being reviewed, then, uh, you can oppose the hours.
The licenses as a matter, of course, are reviewed every year and renewed every year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we will do that, uh, the license, uh, if there is no change, this license will run until the end of the calendar year.
The calendar year.
December 31st. The license will be effective through December 31st.
We go through the renewal process before that, uh, at, during the late fall, um, and, uh, you know, a month or two before the licenses are renewed, and that would be an opportunity every year for abutters, neighbors, or fans of this restaurant to come in and offer their opinion.
And will we be receiving notices as you have sent them on this occasion?
Um-
At that time?
Probably not.
I don't think you, if it's an annual review, I don't believe so.
So, it will be up to us to be informed?
It'll be posted in our calendar when we do renewals.
And is that publicly available?
It's publicly available, yes.
The town has that on the website?
Website, yep.
But are, you can also, um, check in with the selectmen's office and say, can you tell me about when this is? You know, I would say November, check in and say, can you give me an idea about when this is coming up, so I know when to keep my eye out for it?
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
And if you have complaints in the meantime, call the health department or the police department.
Right.
That's, I mean, people do that all the time, and that's, that's the right-
And it will go on the record.
We, we will hear about it.
All right. Next item is Beacon Street Tavern with a name change, and I assume a menu change.
And will the record reflect that I'm recusing myself on this matter due to a business relationship?
Okay.
Are you changing the hours?
Ha, no.
Okay.
But you do have a, um, request that is, uh, as I believe you are aware, was not able to be considered under this application?
I, I did find this out, and it was a little after the fact. I don't know all the bylaws, but it was, uh, a pool table, a non-retail pool table request that, I believe Pat called me in the office and said, you need seven days in advance, and it was our fault, and-
Well, we, we, we have to post this.
She said it was their, the office's fault that it wasn't posted, and that, for me, I'd like to open in a week, and that will have to be done without the possibility of a non-retail pool table. And then the next meeting was the 4th or the 11th.
I think it'll be the 11th.
Then we were told the 18th.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, we're talking, you know, it's a month and a-
Sorry about that. Uh, I have to tell you, sir, it's not at all clear to me you're gonna get a pool table, so don't, [laugh] don't hold your breath.
The timing from when we asked for it was about six or seven weeks ago at least, so it's been a very slow process.
Well, you know what they say, pool starts with P, that rhymes with T, and it's trouble.
Right. Um, however, in, with regard to the other components of your application-
Yes.
Um, this is a change not of owner, but change of name, change of operations, and change of managers.
Yes.
From, uh, you, you have a, uh, both a change of manager and you're proposing an alternate manager.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Um, the, um-
The, uh, RGM, the manager would've been here today, but he's having a baby today.
Oh, well, that's exciting.
This way.
The documentation for the managers has been approved. They are, uh, Safe Service certified. I don't think there's any question about that.
Can I just ask a question about that, though?
Sure, please.
You, you certainly are down on the area of Beacon Street where we tend to get a lot of students, and so I assume people at your establishment are very conscientious in these, the proposed manager and, uh, backup manager would be very aware of, um, asking for identification.
We're very vigilant with that.
I think you've passed your stings, actually. Um, I will point out that this, um, current license is, we're not, there're not gonna be any changes. There is an entertainment license, and it is approved Sunday through Saturday from 11:00 AM till 2:00 AM.
Currently, we are only open from 5:00 till 2:00. We may do lunch in the future, but-
Okay. You need to tell us when you change your operations.
Sure.
Um, because we actually should not be authorizing a license for hours that are not the hours of operations. In this case, I think with the change of name, it's, it's not a transfer, so it's, it's not directly applicable, but, um, we're supposed to hear whenever you change your, um, operations, and hours are a significant, uh, part of that. Okay. Um, any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually just reading the statute regarding licensing for billiards, pool, and other similar bowling alleys.
Whatever that is. What is that other thing?
Um, as I read this application, or the letter in here, um, you're not charging, you're not planning to charge for the pool table.
Nope.
And the statute that is cited, um, requiring the seven-day hearing, uh, states that the selectmen of any town may grant or- of any town may grant or may suspend or revoke at pleasure a license which shall be subject to sections 202 to 205 inclusive, to a person to keep a billiard, pool, or cipio table, whatever that is, or a bowling alley for higher gain or reward upon such terms and conditions as they deem proper. And then it goes on...
To be used for amusement merely and not for the purpose of gaming.
Purposes of gaming, for money or for property. So I don't think this is gonna be used for gaming.
No.
But it, it does have the provision about for higher gain or reward, and if town council is here, I would be curious, is still in the building, I would be curious to know whether, whether we actually need the seven-day notice for a free pool table.
Well, I was, I was actually the associate town council who advised me on this. I don't believe she is here, but she reviewed the statute, and she advised us to...
We, I read the part that said, no original license shall be granted under the provisions except after a public hearing, and that was it.
Yeah, and we've got, we certainly have the public, ah, my goodness, town council is here.
You only have to think, think the thought, and she's on the spot to answer the question.
Hi, Jennifer Gilbert. Well, I was watching live streaming on my computer, so I heard the question. So, so when I was asked, I didn't have the application in front of me, but I would say that for higher gain or reward, depending on how the pool table's gonna be set up, and most pool tables have sort of a coin operated, I would say it would fall under that then.
That, that it would, but the...
Yeah. I just don't know what type of a pool table.
Yeah, the application says it would be free of charge, not coin-operated.
Oh, okay. I didn't have the application, I just had the statute.
Sunday and Tuesday, slow nights.
Sure, absolutely.
So, you know, business tends to get a little slower on the Sunday, Monday, Tuesday of the week. We have a back room that we do a lot of business in, but it's only for private parties, and then we open it up for overflow Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We have a, we had, would have a pool table in there that has a cover top that we can also use for a dining room table. We're playing on using it on our slower nights only, just for joy of the customer, no money charged, no betting, no gambling, for three days a week. That was our plan.
So I, I wonder whether that even needs a license, if it's not a coin-operated?
It's not under the same statute of... If, if there are no charges, no gain, no reward, I would say it wouldn't fall under that particular licensing statute then.
So it's not under entertainment?
As part of the entertainment license? I wouldn't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I think that's how we, I think that's how we got it originally.
But the, what, I think the point is here is we don't need the seven-day notice for a hearing if it's not coin-operated or charged for in any way.
Or charged, there's a fee to come in and use it, or anything like that.
That appears to be what the statute says.
Right.
So we could consider it under the entertainment...
If it needs a license.
License, if it needs one.
I would have to check under the entertainment license if you'd have to modify the entertainment license. I just don't know the answer to that standing here. That would, that was not a question posed to me, and I'd have to look that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, do you think we could just do this conditionally based on, on your review, since it appears that we don't need the seven-day published notice?
Well, I don't, I don't think you could issue the license until you've got a ruling from me on it. I wouldn't feel comfortable with that.
I certainly would not feel comfortable.
Okay.
So can we, can we leave it that?
But we don't have to take any position on it.
If he doesn't need any kind of, it doesn't even need it referenced on his entertainment license, we can have somebody from the selectmen's office call him and tell him, just go ahead, right?
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a very, very narrow question, and that is, does a pool, is a pool table considered a form of entertainment?
A free pool table.
A free pool table under the entertainment license?
Right.
Very narrow question.
I understand the issue. How, and I also, I think, though, that the concern that has led to the delay was a belief that a public hearing had to be noticed with the seven-day notice and the publication in the paper. That does not appear to be the case for a free...
Correct.
Pool table.
Correct.
If a free pool table requires an entertainment license, we actually could do this at our meeting prior to town meeting without a public hearing.
Right, because there's our...
We don't, we don't need a public, we don't need the notice public hearing for a free pool table, and that was the reason, we said we can't, we can't hold a public hearing before a town meeting. So we could pass on this, if we're not gonna do it today, we could pass on this next week.
We could potentially reschedule it.
For next, I mean, we could do everything but the pool table today.
What types of licenses currently exist at this establishment besides the liquor?
It's got liquor, it's common victular, it's got entertainment.
Okay. That's correct, then, if it already has, already has all three of those.
I mean, the entertainment license is a radio, tape, music, and TV standard.
So we could...
I, I think what you should do is vote to continue it to next week, vote to continue this matter until next week.
We can vote the name change and the manager.
You can vote the name change, and with the, with the remainder, simply, you can, after you've heard from everybody, you could close that portion of the hearing and continue the rest of it to Tuesday. Okay?
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
I think that makes sense. But we don't wanna delay the applicant's ability to open. No, no, we're not, we're not...
If you vote his name change and his manager, he can open.
No, he can still open.
He can keep the cover on the pool table, you know, until...
So the only thing that affects is the pool table.
Keep using the pool table as a table.
Which may or may not need an entertainment license at all, and if it needs an entertainment license, it does not need a further public hearing.
That's right, because you're continuing this matter.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you for streaming on your computer.
I hope we've reached now an understanding of our actions under this item.
Can I just ask one question, though? So I'm, I'm just gathering from your name change, are you changing to a sort of Mexican food?
Yes.
Menu?
Yes. We have a Mexican, a partner and myself have a Mexican restaurant in Amherst. We've had one for about, Mission Canteen, it's also the same name, had one for, I think, a year and three quarters now, and it's gone extremely well, and we are bringing the concept down here, which I think will go great. I wouldn't take a chance and just open a place, period. It's a proven winner, and it will work well here.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? Nobody. All right. Then I believe we can, first, we will vote on the items, and then we will continue this hearing for a week until we resolve the matter of the pool table. So I move that we approve the application of DBGF LLC, Doing Business as Beacon Street Tavern, holder of an all kinds beverage license as a common victular at 1032 Beacon Street to change its DBA from Beacon Street Tavern to Mission Cantina. Then I also move a change in manager from Paul Walsh to Tierman B. Smith, and I also move that we approve an alternate manager, Lauren L. Vargas. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And this matter will be continued until our next meeting on Tuesday, the 28th. All right.
Now, we will be meeting on Tuesday, the 28th, not here, but at Brookline High School.
Brookline High School. It will be the first night of town meeting.
And we meet in a classroom, and...
Room 209.
209?
Room 209.
Okay. And, you know, we, we actually, I think, can get, the selectmen's office can get notice to you with regard to whether you need an entertainment license for the pool table, after town council has reviewed that question, and if you do, whether you need, you know, you can always show up, but there hasn't been any objection to the concept here today.
It's not clear to me that it was properly noticed, and people even knew that was an application for a pool table, which is why the public notice part of it could have been more significant, and to have just blown it away might or might not have been a good idea.
Okay.
However, that's it. You've been voted a new name and new management, new managers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is Hopson Scotch, modification of the entertainment license. Good evening.
And chair members of the board, my name is Adam Barnoski, law practice at 300 Washington Street. I'm here on behalf of D2 Restaurants LLC. With me is Darren Toe, he's the co-owner and the manager of the license. Here tonight to amend their license to add three items, instrumental music, vocal music, and a trivia night. They are currently licensed for radio, television, and tape music. As the board will recall, Hopson Scotch has two floors, the first floor being a bar with, with some, with some seating and a larger dining room on the second floor. What they're looking to do is to put the instrumental music and vocals only up on that second floor in one isolated area. They'd like to have the option to provide live accompaniment to dinner service, private functions, et cetera. They're not looking for this to be a source of entertainment or for it to have any sort of specific draw. They're really just looking to replace tape music or radio with a live music setting, a classical guitarist or a pianist, a small jazz trio maybe having a vocalist in there. They're not looking to have concerts or battle of the bands or full drum sets or anything like that, just seeking something quiet and small, and it's an amenity that it's really seen less and less and less today with all the media that's available. As far as the trivia, they're looking to have trivia once, once a week on either a Monday or a Tuesday. It'll be very traditional, there'll be a simple setup, you'll have a host with a small PA, trivia on, sports, and pop culture, local history, et cetera. There'll be no betting involved, no buy-ins, anything like that. They might have a, some sort of a prize as far as a voucher for food only, t-shirts, things of that sort. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. And I'm going to observe that the proposal is for music from 6:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., but your current entertainment license for radio, tape, music, et cetera, actually goes until 2:00 a.m., and I think we would need to modify that.
I, I believe they're looking to still have the ability to have taped music. I think this was just, I'm not sure if you can kind of split the entertainment license like that, but they're really just looking for the things they've requested here to be a cutoff.
We can do, we can do, I think we can modify the entertainment license to indicate that the existing recorded music would not be changed, but we can add the conditions for the instrumental music, vocal music, and trivia.
That would be agreeable.
Right. So maybe it's an amended entertainment license. Where is the town council when we need her? All right. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
Well, as a mother of a musician, I'm always, I always vote in favor of live music, but I do wanna caution you about the amplification, you know, because, so some, sometimes people turn that up too loud, and it really does become an issue for neighboring businesses, or I think, I don't know if you have any residential right backing up to you as we do heard with an earlier applicant, but there is some not too far away, so just be mindful of that.
Absolutely.
And I never even realized that there, you said there would be no betting with trivia night. I didn't know trivia nights had betting.
I didn't either.
I guess...
You know, that was a question that came up.
Adam, you'll have to tell us more about that later at some other time.
That'd be a good trivia question, actually.
Yeah, right. All right. Then I'm, I'm going to move that we approve the application of D2 Restaurant LLC, Doing Business as Hopson Koch, Hopson Scotch, sorry, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victular at 1306 Beacon Street, to amend the entertainment license to include instrumental music, vocalists, and a trivia night, sorry, instrumental music and vocalists on Sunday through Wednesday nights from 11, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and a trivia night Monday and Tuesday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is additional outdoor seating.
Again, for the record, my name is Adam Barnoski.
Oh, you're back again.
Yes, back again. The law officer, Robert Allen, 300 Washington Street. With me is Jason Bosk, general manager of Barcelona, and Scott Lawton, who is the license manager and co-owner of the business.
All right. I have a very serious technical question. I cannot figure out these drawings. I tried my hardest to understand where the bottoms of the people are going to sit on these funny bars that are drawn on the sketch, so...
I'm with you. I was trying to figure out where the 84 seats were.
Right. We are, we are puzzled, I would say mystified, by this...
So, yeah, to start with a technical question to address the chair's concern, and certainly we might wanna have one of the managers come before the board and explain, but it looks like it's a combination of, of bench seating and individual seats. If you look to your right, if you're, if you're facing the entrance, you'll have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven tables.
I get the table ones, they're, they're pretty clear. You can figure out where the people sit at the table.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're, they're low seating, teak-type furniture with, it's almost like, closest thing would be a picnic table.
A picnic table?
Very similar.
Ah-ha!
But the little squares are little stools.
Then I begin to understand.
Yes.
They're picnic tables.
I can't count 60, though, over on that.
All right. And, right. Still can't figure out where they're all gonna be sitting.
Well, if you, if you look at it, in between, if you look at the little squares, you see the larger rectangles across from them, those are tables.
Right.
And then the next square is actually a long, sort of couch-like wooden seat.
So there'll be four, will there be four people sitting back to back?
Yes, if you go to the center of it, they actually will have their backs to each other.
Oh, that's, that's what it is.
We've, we've done it before, it looks really great. It's a nice low seating, and it just doesn't look like a sea of tables, so...
So there'll be 16 people at each one of those?
Oh, I see.
If, if, if we maximize it, if every seat gets...
Well, that's, that would be your maximum capacity theoretically. You could have fewer on the bench, right?
Usually there are a few empties scattered around.
Okay. Well, that certainly helps.
Yeah, I don't understand the other side. I don't have a problem with the dining side, but the bar side doesn't seem to have any tables.
Yeah, that is, they're equally confusing. All of it's confusing.
The other side is, is a lower, lower seating, and it's, it's, there are tables, there's, if you look at, like I said, if you look at the little squares, very small squares, those are actual stools.
Okay.
Little, low stools that you sit on.
Right.
And then you're sitting across from a table, and then the next square that looks the same as the table is the sort of couch-like seating.
Ah-huh.
And then the other one backs up to it.
So it's kind of like booth seating?
It is kind of like booth seating, but on the outside, you have two little stools that you sit on.
Okay.
We can provide you a picture of your, like, we have several...
Yeah, I, I, I actually am usually pretty good at reading drawings, but these were a mystery to me. Okay.
Okay.
I, I guess we now understand better how the 84 people could be seated, which is only, I think, the really significant thing. And basically, what I understand you're doing is expanding into the area that's to the west of the entrance vestibule, is that right? No?
No, there's actually no, there's gonna be no expansion, the, the...
Oh, this is just rearranging the existing space?
It's a very, very large space.
Yeah, okay.
And there's certainly demand for outdoor seating in the area.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I was, I was there a couple Saturday nights ago, and the only, my only comment is that the, in the area where you say bar, outdoor dining area, because you guys are so popular, that's where people were waiting for, to be seated and for tables, and it was getting pretty crowded, and you're... crowded in your vestibule there of people waiting. And it just occurs to me that by making this bar, outdoor dining area into a new seating area, you're not going to have a place for people to wait for their tables anymore.
You're not going to have to wait, because they're going to have.
Well, I get that, I get that dynamic, too, but.
Yes.
And yet you have a strategy for what you do. You actually made people very comfortable and served them sangria while they were waiting, which is fantastic, but.
Well, we have a very good problem on our hands right now.
Yes.
And it is that we are very busy, but what we've been doing on Fridays and Saturday evenings is actually, when, once these seats are full and the bar area is full enough that we feel it's congested, that it doesn't feel, we don't want it to get too uncomfortable for the guests, we actually start turning people away at that point, at the front door. And we've actually got a lot of feedback from the fireplace in the abbey, that they've gotten some great spillover business from, that they're actually really happy.
Ooh, that's pink.
Okay.
So I actually, just kind of a nit, you're asking for 84 seats outdoors, and this plan shows 64.
No.
Forty on the.
No, it's 84.
It's actually 84.
Sixty, is that 40?
Sixty on the right. Sixty and 24.
So where do we get 60?
It's doubling. Well, it's why we couldn't read the, you can't read.
See those, okay, on this.
We get 28 at the tables.
These are actually seats in here.
Yep, no, I understand.
28 at the exterior tables.
I mean, we have to take it on faith, because you can't count from the way these are drawn.
I actually counted them.
Yeah, I counted. I got you. Yep, no, that's, okay, now.
All right.
Yep.
Are we clear about this?
Now I'm clear.
And we know what we're being asked to do, which is to increase the seating from 36 to 84. And we know where they are roughly.
Good.
All right, no other changes?
No other changes, the interior seating will stay the same.
Okay.
Will this be the largest outdoor dining and.
Probably.
I think it will.
I would say so, yeah, most likely.
I think it was previously, at its last incarnation, too, there was substantial outdoor seating there, when it was, what was it?
American Graff.
Thank you, I should know that.
And I am assuming that you're aware of the DPW's concerns about intruding on the public ways.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
You have, you're warned about that, or on notice about that. Okay, any other questions? Then I don't believe this one is a public hearing, so I think I can move that we approve the request of Barcelona Brookline, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victualler at 1700 Beacon Street, for an increase in outside seating from 36, sorry, yeah, from 36 to 84.
Were there people here that wanted to speak on this?
Well, I guess, is there anyone here who wants to comment on this application? Seeing and hearing none, okay. So I have the motion to increase the seating from 36 to 84. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Happy seating.
Thank you very much.
The next one has been withdrawn. So. Huh, sorry, have you folks come for cognac? Oh.
No cognac.
Oh dear, I announced earlier that they've withdrawn their application. So we don't know if it will come to us again, but this is, previously, this was a continuation of a hearing that was begun earlier, and they have withdrawn the application, so if they want to make any applications, they have to start all over again. Okay, so.
What does the, as it stands today, does he, he does not own the, he's left, does he?
I don't know the answer to that. We've been, we understand that the restaurant may be up for sale, but it's also operating at this time, as far as I know. I'm sorry, you really have to come over to the microphone if you want to talk.
The answer is we don't know.
The owner, we understand that it has been offered for sale, but the management has not changed. The management is still the same management, all right?
We don't know.
It's still managed by the same, Mr. Cognac is the manager-owner, and there is no change as of this time. Okay. Finally, we have a couple of warrant article items. First being nine, sorry, 1920 and 21. And those articles are before us with a memorandum of agreement in connection with them. And I just want to be sure that everybody has all of the documents that you need in order for us to discuss these. I don't think there's much that we don't know, but let's make sure we've got all of our documents in hand. Because the. So you should have the final version of the memorandum of agreement with all of the changes in it. And there should be an attachment with a recalculation from the assessor. Everybody got that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we know what we're dealing with here.
Yes.
Are there any comments from members of the board or questions before we go forward? And there's Town Council, just in time. I think we're pretty clear about where we are, but I don't want to move these unless we're all fully up to speed.
Sure, Jennifer Gilbert, Town Council. The memorandum of agreement is intended to be incorporated into the several votes under Articles 19, 20, and 21. The memorandum of agreement outlines some basic terms with respect to both the escrow agreement that is yet to be negotiated, as well as the air rights lease. The price for the release of easement, as well as the grant of the partial easement and the air rights lease are incorporated into the MOA, and were determined by our chief assessor, Gary McCabe. And so state law requires that with respect to these type of property interests, a price, a minimum price be set and incorporated as well into the vote at town meeting. This document will be binding and will be recorded. It has provisions with respect to zoning relief and the Dover amendment. With respect to the escrow agreement, that remains to be negotiated, but it will contain provisions with respect to the building permit, being specific as to a third theater space with a minimum of 125 seats. Must preserve the current art deco details that they've been working on over the past decade or so. It requires a design advisory team review, regardless of whether or not they qualify for Dover relief, and they've agreed to that. It requires a parking lot redesign plan. Requires a significant review of the parking and loading areas in the back to determine whether they're, to make sure there are no significant impacts on the other uses in the area. With respect to the air rights lease, there'll be two tiers. One that considers the nonprofit current theater use, and will also take into consideration any change in use or in the nonprofit status. In other words, if it were to change in a decade or more down the road to a for-profit or a different use, there'd be a second tier in the air rights lease agreement, which also remains to be negotiated. And that has to be approved by the state legislature, because we're looking at a 99-year lease. Currently, town meeting has authorization only up to 30-year leases, so we will be seeking home rule authorization at the state legislature for that. And then again, as I said, the price, it will be incorporated. If zoning relief is granted, any piece of it, whether it's for a loading area or other piece of it under Dover, and they do qualify for Dover, what we've put in there is that the board has the last and sort of final say on release of the escrow, release of all the land disposition documents to make this deal happen. So that is sort of a belt and suspenders approach, and the moderator wants this to be sent out with the supplemental mailing on the 23rd, so should the board approve it, I'll make sure to get the theater, it's not only the theater signature, but also Hamilton Corporation, which is the actual owner of the property. So with all three parties' signature, we'll get it out to the town meeting members, so they have the final version.
Any questions for Town Council? Yes, Selectman Daley?
I think the price you're referring to has to do with the exchange of easements between us and them, but some of that could also be offset by public benefits, could it not?
That's exactly right. So the provision that we have speaks to that. We have to set the price, and what we, what we say is that that can, the value can be determined by including the public benefits that the theater provides. For example, use of the large theater room for public events, that certainly has a value to the town. They are considering spending their own money on redoing and redesigning and paving and curbing and other issues in the back parking lot that the town would have had to otherwise pay for. They also have a payment in lieu of taxes agreement that could be also be considered as an offset, because they're not required to pay taxes as a nonprofit, but they've agreed to enter into a pilot agreement and continue on with that pilot agreement. So you're actually right, and that's contained in paragraph five of the MOA.
And I'll just point out that we have an updated valuation from the assessor.
Right, that's attached to the MOA.
Right.
And with a memorandum, and then also a chart with respect to the extinguishment of the easement, the indicated value is 148,800. And then you would, then also take into consideration the value coming back to the town. They're actually granting the town an easement on the corner in the back, which our town engineer, Peter Ditto, wanted to keep, because that makes the travel from that corner piece much easier. And that's valued at 38,170, so that's a value coming back to the town. And then you have, with respect to the air rights, we have several values, because right now we believe it to be a one-story, but we, I wanted to make sure that the values for a two or a three-story were in there, depending on how much height they're going to be using there, because there's a significant amount of height, 70 feet, I believe, as of right. So we have several values there, based on a one-story building, a two-story, and a three-story. For the 950 square feet, that's the air rights piece. And if you look at the value for those, it's 58,126. For the one-story, 132,226 for a two, and then 214,876. Now, those are sales values, but if you were to look at the memo, if you were to do an annual air rights lease, the year one rental rate for a one-story, just on the air rights, is only 2,325. So you have to read the memo along with the chart, and then it all makes sense.
It's very complicated, but it does make sense. Questions, other questions for Town Council? Selectman Benka, you've taken out your warrant book as if you wanted to check language.
No, well, I was just wondering precisely what the terms of the vote would be, and I was just looking, and the advisory committee has voted a favorable action subject to the memorandum of agreement. And that language is already in the advisory committee vote.
It is.
It refers to a draft memorandum, but I'm.
Yes, that's correct.
I think.
Well, we listed a vote on the memorandum of agreement, and maybe that would be the first vote we want to take, and then vote each of the warrant articles.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Right, but you should, I would suggest mirroring the vote to make sure your votes of approval on the articles are conditional on this final MOA.
Sure, but don't we need to vote the MOA first?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we should vote the MOA, and then vote each article with the MOA as a condition for favorable action?
Yeah, I think you can, I think if Dick has the.
Yeah.
You want to tell us a vote?
Well, let me, I agree, I think we would vote the memorandum of agreement, and let me just read the language that's in, for example.
Yes, please, thank you.
It says, Article 19, this is the advisory committee's vote, the last paragraph says, Article 19 is approved, subject to terms and conditions substantially as set forth in a draft memorandum of agreement by and among the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation, the Hamilton Charitable Corporation, and the Town of Brookline, which memorandum shall accompany and be made a part of this vote. Now, with our vote today, we are beyond a draft memorandum, so.
Right, so you want, right, it's the final as presented to you this evening.
So it would.
You could vote that language and just take out the word draft.
We would just take out, take out the word draft in our vote.
Right.
Good.
Okay, I guess I want to be very careful about this. Are we approving, adopting? How would the language for a vote on the memo?
The vote on the memorandum of agreement is to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented by Town Council this evening.
Approve is the word I'm looking for.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve the memorandum of agreement presented to us on Tuesday, May 21st, in connection with the Articles 19, 20, and 21 of the annual town meeting.
And you should have two, two final versions with the exhibit attached for your signature.
Right, right. All in favor of approving the memorandum of agreement, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, I'm going to move favorable action on Article 19, and perhaps, Mr. Benka, if you'd read that out, and then we'll.
I would, well, it's quite a long vote. It's, this is the vote that the town vote to extinguish, abandon, or otherwise release a portion of the easement, and the vote goes on giving the description of the easement by meets and bounds, so I think, I would recommend that we accept, that we vote favorable action on the vote.
Of the advisory committee with.
As proposed by the advisory committee, with the deletion of the word draft in the final paragraph.
Can you say the pages in the combined reports?
Yes, on pages 19-5 to 19-6 of the combined reports.
So can you read the operative sentence?
Yes.
That has the word, yeah, read that.
Without, without the word draft.
Correct.
It will be, Article 19 is approved, subject to terms and conditions substantially as set forth in a memorandum of agreement by and among the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation, the Hamilton Charitable Corporation, and the Town of Brookline, which memorandum shall accompany and be made part of this vote.
Okay, so did you get that, Kate? All right. That, then, the motion is favorable action, and I'm not going to even try to repeat. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, now, we get to Article 20, which has, as recommended by the advisory committee, it says, Article 20 is approved, similar language, and then it says, the memorandum of agreement referred to in the above motion is set forth on pages 19-7 to 19-14 of these reports. So I would recommend that we take out that last sentence and take out the word draft.
Yes.
Okay, so the last.
Kate, did you, you got it?
I would recommend, I move favorable action.
On Article 20.
Article 20, as voted by the advisory committee, with the final paragraph to delete the word draft, and to delete the final sentence, so that the final paragraph will read, Article 20 is approved, subject to terms and. twenty is approved, subject to terms and conditions substantially as set forth in a memorandum of agreement by and among the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation, the Hamilton Charitable Corporation, and the Town of Brookline."
Oh, wait, it shouldn't say substantially. It just is what it is.
Okay.
And then actually, the language is in the prior vote.
Then we'll take out...
Take the language from the prior vote. That's what you want.
Okay, so let me move to reconsider the prior vote.
But that language is in the prior vote.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so we're going to take it out now. We're going to reconsider the prior vote.
The word substantially.
You don't need the word substantially. You're voting it favorable action.
Right, it was in the first vote.
Yeah.
So let me move to reconsider...
We don't need that in there.
Let me move to reconsider our vote on Article nineteen.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Now, let me move Article nineteen as we previously voted it and without the word substantially.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Okay, now let me... Back to Article twenty. The final paragraph of Article twenty would read, "Article twenty is approved, subject to terms and conditions as set forth in a memorandum of agreement by and among the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation, the Hamilton Charitable Corporation, and the Town of Brookline." And I would add, "Which memorandum shall accompany and be made a part of this vote."
That's right.
Yes.
Perfect.
Got that, Kate? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Finally...
Okay. On Article twenty-one...
Article twenty-one.
We have similar language in the advisory committee vote as we had in Article twenty, so let me move Article twenty-one in the language voted by the advisory committee with a change in the final paragraph to read as follows. Article twenty-one is approved, subject to terms and conditions as set forth in a memorandum of agreement by and among the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation, the Hamilton Charitable Corporation, and the Town of Brookline, which memorandum shall accompany and be made a part of this vote.
Correct.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kate, I sure hope you got it all. All right. Last item on our agenda is possible reconsideration of Article Two, collective bargaining. I will move reconsideration of Article Two. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Mr. Bo, we have two collective bargaining agreements, I believe.
That is correct. Sandra DeBoe, Human Resources Director. Since I last appeared before you, we have two additional collective bargaining agreements that have been ratified, and they... One is with the AFSMI bargaining unit for the library. It is pretty much in step with the main contract that was settled in April with duration of July first, 2012, and expiring on June thirtieth, 2015, with two percent increases in each of the fiscal years. Under this agreement, we will be moving all the AFSMI members to electronic pay advisories as we did with the main contract. We have come to agreement on new paraprofessionals hired after July first, 2013. Will now have a different vacation allotment than those previously, which result in them having earning no more than four weeks in a calendar year, beginning in their fifteenth year. We also made an adjustment to the longevity pay schedule. They were seeking for an overall adjustment, but they were concerned that they wanted a greater adjustment at the top two tiers, and so we made adjustments of twenty-five dollars in the lower two tiers and two hundred for each of the higher tiers. With regard to this collective bargaining group, they also had an increase in their night differential. They have a night differential for the night shifts, and it was an increase by two dollars to eleven dollars per shift. And the contract going forward will be a six-point-three percent increase.
Okay, questions for...
Over three years.
Over three years.
Right. Any question... Oh, and this has been ratified by the library employees.
That is correct.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Bo? Then I just have a brief comment.
Quick. I want to compliment you on moving ahead so expeditiously to get some of these done. I also want to say, given that our last round of contracts were very low numbers, including, I think we had a zero in all of them, and so this is not out of line, I think.
Right, we thought it was appropriate.
All right. I move that we approve the collective bargaining agreement with Local thirteen fifty-eight, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, AFFL-CIO. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Engineering?
Yes, with regard to the engineers, they also had a contract for the same term from July first, 2012, to June thirtieth, 2015, with the same two, two, and two increases in each fiscal year. We had done some work with them in two thousand and nine. We did a classification study that looked at engineers and similar other agencies and municipalities. We agreed within the confines of this contract that there needed to be some adjustments in within their pay scales, which we agreed to. And they, being the engineer and math wizards that they are, were able to come up with a method that the over... They would see an overall change in the pay grade, but they were actually taking steps backwards so that it would not impact the budget as much. So they were going back in steps but still making more money per hour, and on top of that, getting the two percent. In order to come within the framework that we were asking them to with regard to wages, though, they did agree to take a reduction in their longevity at one hundred and twenty-five dollars per gate in the first two gates, which is significant because that's where the majority of all their current employees are, in those first two gates. So with all that good work, it comes to six-point-two over the course of the three-year contract.
And this contract has also been ratified by the Brookline Engineering Division Associates.
Unanimously, yes.
Okay. Questions, comments for Mr. Bo? Then I move that we approve the Brookline Engineering Division Associates Collective Bargaining Agreement. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, I move favorable action on Article Two, collective bargaining. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then finally, Article ten, do we have a motion to reconsider?
I'll move for reconsideration.
All in favor of reconsideration under Article ten, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And what would we like to do under reconsideration?
I'm going to say, first of all, I think Mr. Ames actually was correct when he said that they've made some substantial changes and tried to address some of our concerns. I still have a number of concerns and feel that the language still leaves potentially a lot of stepping on toes between human relations and human resources. And I think I also, you know, I notice... I think that I would still recommend that it be referred to our diversity committee to really get this right. Even in their write-up in the combined reports, they mentioned what an extensive process had gone into the human relations bylaw initially. And I think that we will certainly... We've had our first meeting. We will try to move very expeditiously, but I think this does deserve some attention to get this right.
Okay.
In the advisory committee's vote on this, they made specific reference to the governor's executive order five twenty-six, and I think... I don't believe our vote has that yet, and...
I have no problem with... Did they have... It's part of the referral, though.
It's part of the referral, but it refers it with a...
Okay.
I'm sorry, should have been better prepared. With request that in consultation with the selectmen's committee, that the... That the... I'm sorry, that the Board of Selectmen formulate an equal employment opportunity affirmative action policy for the town, taking into consideration as appropriate... And there's debate over whether there should be a comma after appropriate or not. As I believe there should be, as appropriate, Governor of DeValle Patrick's executive order five twenty-six, the underlying applicable state and federal law, and the December eleventh, two thousand and twelve, Human Resources Board equal employment opportunity policy. So I think that's... Those are worthy directions, and I would move that we amend our previous vote to include that.
Okay, I think there should be a comma before and after as appropriate. Two commas.
Yes, I agree with you. Taking into consideration, comma, as appropriate, comma. I only mentioned it because it was...
I have no problem with that. This is certainly a topic that was on my list to the committee to look at. We have a draft version from the Human Relations, I believe, the Diversity Subcommittee, although maybe that has been voted by the whole Human Relations Commission, I'm not sure. And we have another draft version from our Human Resources Board, and certainly have executive order five twenty-six to look at, but I think we may be able to look at policies from a few other venues as well to try to come up with, you know, the best option.
I'm going to add one little grammatical thing because I've read the note, and now I understand why. I think what was intended, and the reason there were no commas, is that it was suggesting that as appropriate, because there are aspects of the executive order that would not apply to municipalities, that you might want it to say, comma, as appropriate, comma, Governor Patrick's executive order, and the underlying, et cetera. Do you read that?
I'm really wondering whether putting in the commas or not putting in the commas and the and is really...
Well, I just figured out about the commas, that's all.
Worth the effort and is such that the advisory committee then has to go back and look at their vote again.
This is a referral motion.
It's a referral motion.
Yeah, right. Yeah, take the commas out.
Well, was the omission of the comma significant, you think? I thought it was just a... I thought it was just an oversight myself.
I don't think it changes the meaning.
I mean, there's...
I just thought grammatically...
No, no, I agree with you. It should have commas.
I didn't realize that somebody meant some meaning behind omitting that comma, but...
Okay, I'm not going to argue over the commas. All right, fine.
I would move favorable action in the words of the advisory committee.
Without commas.
Without commas, without a change, unless somebody can point out a significant substantive impact of that, and I don't see that.
Well, I just... I thought that this was... The note there and everything was that you might...
Yeah, you're understanding what I just clicked on, but that's okay. It doesn't matter.
I think it reads better with the commas, to be honest.
I think it does, too.
Of course it does. You should have commas, but...
I don't think there's any substantive meaning difference either, but...
I mean, it could be read without the commas to say that it's making a statement that executive order five twenty-six is appropriate, but I don't actually have any problem with that.
Oh, I see what you're...
I don't have any... I don't really have a problem with that, if you want it, because I think it is...
Now I see what you're saying.
It is certainly applicable, and...
Well, I'll go along with the commas.
Okay, all right.
All right. Well, I still move then with the commas.
Okay. All right. I think we've solved our grammatical problem. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I'm getting comatose here.
All right, I think we are somewhat comatose. But that ends the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-first. So now, bad news.